Good morning. It's been nice to see everybody wearing jackets in June.
What's it about?
Well, I'm flattered yesterday.
Well, God remembered he didn't give us a spring. We went straight from midwinter to midsummer. He said, oh, wait, we'll give you some spring now.
We're good here.
It's delightful sleeping.
We need the rain.
Yeah, I love having a blanket on my bed. I'm not going to complain.
All the farmers know that if you cut hay before July 4th, you have a 50/50 chance of having washed hay.
We're ready.
And clean hay doesn't pay any better. So it is nine o'clock, time for our Tuesday morning meeting. And Mark Hammer is here to do our invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the freedom that we have in your son, Jesus Christ, and we thank you that that freedom manifests itself in this beautiful country, that we have democracy, that we can make our voices be heard. Lord, we know at the times that we do allow our voices to be heard because we all care passionately about our opinions, that we as folks can get riled up and we can forget that each of us is created in the image of God. And I ask that we remember that today. I do ask that your son, Jesus Christ, would be in this room, guiding the conversations, allowing opinions to be shared, that we do this in the spirit of truth, gentleness, and humility, and love. Father, may all opinions, all agenda items be discussed, and Lord, may there bring some peace to our community. May this bring a time where our community gets stronger because I think that's the desire for each and every one of us is that we want a stronger, healthier standpoint. We love you, Father. Thank you for Bonner County. Thank you for these commissioners and everyone involved. And it's in your name that we pray now. Amen.
Amen. All men pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Okay, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes here and whatever time I use up, I'll add right on the end for y'all for your hour of public comment. There was some information put out that I think might have been misinterpreted. There was an approval of a year's salary to an employee for retiring and leaving. And all three of us were unanimous on that. Commissioner Williams did a great job of negotiating that down just a little bit. And so that was approved to avoid a lawsuit. But I believe the information that was thrown out there was not only incorrect, but it was intentionally misleading. It was said that me and Luke Ommitt had approved a year's salary to a departing employee, which is not true because we never approved it, we never voted on it, we had a discussion. And this particular employee, what makes it a little unique, that employee serves in a capacity different than anybody else that's employed by Bonner County as he is head of our Veteran Services. As head of Veteran Services, he gets to provide services for our veterans who paid for mine and your freedom. The freedom to come here, voice your opinion, the freedom to go to Walmart, the freedom to jump in your car and drive to Florida and hang out on the beach if you want to, that none of us pay for other than in our tax dollars. They pay dearly. They pay dearly. Some of them paid with their life. That buys mine and your freedom. And we take advantage of it. Sometimes we take it for granted. But the ones that ensure our freedoms and pay for our freedoms carry with them stuff that you and I will never carry, hopefully will never carry. They've been put in a situation where they may have to take lives. That changes a person forever. They may be in a situation where their comrade sitting next to them now is part of their uniform because pieces of them are all over them. And these are things that our veterans carry every day the rest of their life. Some are strong-minded enough that they can file it back in a cabinet and kind of keep it there, but it never goes away. They live this every day of their life. And the person we're talking about was hired at a rate below what it pays and was never brought up to that pay rate, which I think is a true injustice, being the capacity in which he serves and the job that he does for our veterans, which we could never pay if no matter what we paid, would never be enough. We had a discussion as to, is it possible for us to fix and right this wrong? Because he was done wrongly. He never complained and never would, just the kind of humble gentleman he is. He was told that he didn't qualify to hold this position, and he retired out of the military as a brigadier general. I haven't read the job description for a Veteran Services guy with Bonner County, but I'm thinking that any general in any branch of service would meet that qualification. And the importance of that job, I've asked a special friend to be here today, Major General Sarah Zoppel. Did I say that right? Okay. Would you like to come up and tell us about Veteran Services and your experience?
Yeah, I don't want to take up too much of your time because I know you have a lot of business. I served in the Air Force more than 30 years, about 31 and a little bit, active duty. During that time, I moved 18 times. I never put down roots in any community. I lived overseas a lot of that time. The only community that I knew was the Air Force, and I knew how to get things done. When I retired, which I did, I retired in Virginia a few years ago, and it's like moving to a foreign country, trying to adjust to how things work in America versus my own little world. Things like where do you go? How do you get medical care? What on earth are these communications coming back to me about medical insurance and what I pay and what I don't? That's amazing. And through all of that, the fact that, like I said, we really, we don't put down roots in communities. We, I was a Texan the whole time. I hadn't lived in Texas since I was 17, but I was a Texan the whole time. And I lived in different places, but I was not completely part of those communities. When you look now at where do you find the most homeless with mental illness? And it's among veterans. The highest percentage are veterans. And I think part of it is because they're not connected to a community. So the sort of services that we're talking about here really are important. It's important for the individual, for the veteran who's retiring or separating or whatever, but it's also important for the community so that they land on or live in or try to put down roots in. Because initially, it's hard to match where we've lived with living in a regular community. So I just want to say what he does is very important, and I really appreciate that sort of service. Thank you.
Thank you, General.
So that being said, and I think everybody that's in this room that is a veteran or has a family member that's a veteran understands some of the things that they have to deal with. And the discussion in our executive session was, do we right this wrong? How do we right this wrong? Can we right this wrong? If we do, how are we going to fund it? I personally, as your commissioner, will give $10,000 out of my salary for 2024 towards any settlement or compensation for back pay, whatever we can legally do. I would do that because of what this man has done for us. And I would hope that no one in Bonner County would think that this is a bad thing. And sometimes it's not about the money because we could never pay enough to our veterans for what we owe. We just can't do it. There's not that much money on planet Earth that would compensate for our freedom. And I know nobody in here is willing to give theirs up. But we were simply trying to look at how we would go about righting a wrong and maybe make some type of compensation towards this man. And if there's anybody here that thinks that's a bad ideal, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you this morning.
Can I ask a pause for a second? This is actually an agenda item, and this section is public comment for the public to have bring their issues. Is there a reason we're not going to just do this in, under the section for this topic?
We're going to do this right now. But this is not about this. This is about the ideal of what was put out in the media and the false narrative in which it was placed.
Well, you're making--
I'm running this meeting, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
And I appeal the decision of the chair then. So let's vote on that because it's an agenda item. And you're taking, you are actually changing the agenda.
No, now we're on public comment time.
But you actually have to vote since I appealed the decision.
Go ahead, Mr. Rose Dale. The chair recognizes you.
I know you want me, and I know you want me bad. I'll wait till I get to the public comment so I can do it properly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if there's anybody that thinks this is a bad ideal, I'm not saying we're going to do it. I'm not saying we can do it. We were simply having a conversation about how we could possibly right a wrong because sometimes it's about doing the right thing. But if you think this is a bad ideal, you're more than welcome to comment. And it is 10:10, and we will open up for public comment now. And we have Jennifer Kramer as first speaker.
Thank you, good morning. My comments are about the agenda item regarding severance pay. And I'll just preface with, I have utmost respect for our veterans, so it has nothing to do with that. But I spent my career in corporate business, working for for-profit companies. There's a big difference between for-profit companies and government. The employers make business decisions to improve their business, and sometimes those decisions involve laying off employees. My experience with severance pay is it's always been a case-by-case, business decision by business decision, depending on the health of the company and what they need to do to improve that company. I've never been aware of a tip of a blanket severance offering made available regardless of circumstances. Additionally, those severance decisions have always been made to my, in my experience, by the Board of Directors that oversees that company, not by the CEO or the officers of the company. So it's a separate entity that oversees the company. Also, for-profit companies have some control over their revenues, whereas county government does not. Bonner County's revenues are fixed. We cannot afford a blanket severance policy. We're scrambling to figure out how to pay for that failed culvert on DuFert. As a taxpayer, I want my taxes to pay for goods and services, not severance packages. From my perspective, the government, or you, the commissioners, need to prioritize the needs of the stakeholders, the taxpayers first and foremost. I'm not saying that county employees aren't valuable, but paying a severance is a benefit we cannot afford, especially severance up to a year. To me, that's, and I'm speaking generically, right? Not in the instance you're talking about. But to me, that's ridiculous and a poor business decision. Typically, severance in a for-profit company is one maybe two weeks per year served. And that's a for-profit company, not government. I suggest you make severance decisions when circumstances arise that require a layoff. Do not make a blanket decision now. The reason and the budget at the time of layoff needs to be the driver behind any severance decision. Also, the Department of Labor has no requirement for severance pay in the Fair Labor Standards Act. And if county employees have an expectation for severance, then you, the commissioners, need to reset that expectation to the reality of the budget. And if that expectation is clear, then there should not be threats of lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Donkey.
Good morning. First, I'd like to just say thank you to Roden Bridge and anyone else that's been assisting with how quickly they've been expediting the work on DuFert. Very pleased at the progress they've been making and the schedule they've been posting. It's certainly exceeded my expectations for how much time it might take, and so I'd like to publicly thank them for those efforts. Second, I wanted to ask, I wasn't aware, Chairman, if a few, I don't know if it was maybe about five weeks ago there was a discussion and you guys had decided as a board to go ahead with allowing draft documents of the board packages to come out. And that was done for one meeting. And since then, there haven't been any. So I wasn't sure if that decision--
They've been done every day. So if you look on the front page of the website, right down in the right-hand corner, there's a PDF of draft documents.
So the format changed from when the first one was adjacent to the agenda?
We just, it seemed better to place them where all the meeting information actually is.
Okay, so it's in a different location than where it was first placed. Okay, so I missed it. Thank you for clarifying.
Right on the front page of the website.
Okay, it's very helpful information, so thank you for clarifying where it is now. And then also, I was hoping to ask a question if you might be able to answer. I'd like to better understand, when you call special meetings, what criteria you use to call a special meeting as compared to putting that item on the regular meeting agenda?
Could be time, could be the issue. It's a case-to-case thing. Some things can wait, some things need to be addressed sooner. And so there's a myriad of things that dictate that.
So is there any litmus test you guys use? Any filter for each decision, whether or not it's appropriate to call a special meeting versus placing it on the regular weekly agenda?
Any commissioner, any elected official can call for a special meeting, and then it's determined from there.
Okay, I just, yeah, I was wondering if the county had specific criteria since state statute is very vague. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Morning. Hamilton McNaul. Oh, there you are. All right.
I appreciate any man service because I too serve. Golden parachute offered by the county to a former military member is a very nice gesture, and I won't argue that. General, Brigadier General retired pay is about $105,000 a year retirement. I'm sure the man took the job to help veterans, but I don't think the county can afford that, in my opinion.
It was just something we were looking at. So, Ms. Rossman?
Thank you. I'm Melinda Rossman, and I'm a Bonner County resident and property owner. This is the first time I've attended a community commission meeting. And I read every week. I get the local paper, and I read it every day. And I read the reports that go in that paper based on these meetings every so often, every week. And I'm asking you to show much more respect to all members of this committee. We elected you to represent us, not to be in petty barnyard brawls with each other in front of the entire community. I'm asking you, when a person on this committee expresses an opinion, they're equally listened to and honored, that they represent all of us, not just your boyhood brawl mentality that I'm witnessing in the newspaper. So you will be seeing me here more often, and I will hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Lord knows they can't lie on Facebook or in the newspaper. Susan?
I witnessed it already this afternoon, this morning already, so I know it's true.
Yep. Name for the record.
Thank you. Susan Drumheller, Sagal, Idaho. And I listened with interest last week to Commissioner Williams' report on meeting with the Panhandle Health District. And I appreciate attention being paid to the important issue of septic systems. I've lived in North Idaho for 33 years. I grew up in rural Montana and was president of my 4-H Club. Not that that really matters, but it seems that some people think that those of us advocating for stronger land use regulations are urban transplants from California, Oregon, and Washington. We do have a lot of new people moving to this area, but I suspect most of them also care deeply about the water quality of our lakes and rivers and especially our drinking water. We have an abundance of water compared to the rest of the state and also compared to most of the nation. Because we have so much water, we have a lot at stake when it comes to rewriting our land use codes that cut the Health District out of the process, which is exactly what has happened in Bonner County and has made us an exception in the state in the way that development is permitted. The county began removing the Health District from overseeing development in 2016. First, they cut PHD out of building location permit sign-off, then later removed the Health District review of minor land divisions and later all subdivisions. The more recent amendments to Title 11 have not gone far enough to address this lack of oversight. We need to tackle the problem initially at the land division level and also restore Health District sign-off requirement at the building location permit stage. The deregulation of septic systems was initially rationalized by the complaint that septic review fees were too high, but the fees are not excessive. Developers can build that cost into their business plan. And the Health District review at the subdivision level phase can save homeowners great expense in case they purchase property that is not configured in a way to allow for a standard septic system. If that happens, it means they either have to purchase an easement or install a system that's much, much more costly. The Health District site review fees are minuscule in comparison. Meanwhile, the county planning department has greatly increased its own application fees, which kind of undermines that cost argument. So we're left with widespread concern that problematic septic systems will lead to contaminated water, which has been borne out by actual events. The contamination of wells in the Mountain Homestead subdivision north of Sandpoint is a case in point that we need more Health District involvement prior to county approval of developments. The two goals under the Natural Resource Section of our Comprehensive Land Use Plan call for protecting the water of Bonner County, among other natural resources. And secondly, to consider agency comments with regard to natural resources. In the last several years, the county has failed to live up to these goals. But I'm hopeful that this board will set a course correction and do more to protect one of the most amazing natural assets we have in North Idaho, our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thurlins in the hallway listening. I'll take the challenge, Mr. Chairman. And I retired out of the U.S. Army as a captain. I served 10 years in the National Guard overseas in Desert Storm. Your comments about veterans are straight-on point, but much of that comment was about veterans and not Veteran Service Officer Brian Holt. And so I think we crossed the line there in confusing what Brian does or Mr. Holt does as opposed to who the veterans are. And I was keen to take note of that. I request that any financial consideration of any retiring employee see two public meetings, the discussion, and then a week later, the decision. Thus, I request the future B.O.C.C. agenda business item for the VSO decision. That's what Ordinance 1200 says.
That's exactly what took place.
"VSO Holt is a kind, dedicated, well-respected servant of the Lord Jesus Christ and his community and his family. Rating and reviews don't justly identify Holt's character." Matthew 13:16, Jesus says, do you know that one? "He who has ears, let him hear; but blessed are your eyes, for they see; and your ears, for they hear." If there's a contract that he wasn't paid for, let's see the contract to say what he wasn't paid for. Then you're completely vindicated. The biblical phrases or prayers of ability to perceive and understand the world in the B.O.C.C. around us. Let it be further written and said that VSO Holt is a type of person we should all want to emulate and seat in either the chair or vice-chair's seat. Undoubtedly, the VSO does not possess the character which seeks to fleece the public treasury. Secondly, I would like to state that I request that the Wednesday, 6/21/2023, special meeting be canceled and rescheduled for the regular business meeting on Tuesday, 6/27/23. It should be on today's agenda. You gave a lackluster reason why it wasn't, but it was noticed on the same day as today's agenda. A pattern of limited public review has become apparent. The fee increases to DMV and now solid waste seem to find their way to special meeting meetings and not the regular business meeting. It's not by, that is by design. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion, as diminutive as is, and you flatter yourself thinking that I want you because if I wanted you, I would get you. But I have no regard for you, Mr. Rose, whatsoever other than thank you for your service.
I think you just proved this young woman's complaint.
Well, like he said, we have ears to hear and eyes to see. But there are those with having ears do not hear, and those with eyes do not see. And they choose to believe that which is not true. And what was put out in the paper and on Facebook was not true. The only thing true about it was the Board of Commissioners approved a year's salary to a departing employee. And this lady is the one who negotiated the price and voted for it.
That's a lie.
No, ma'am, it is not.
Where's your proof?
It's on the agenda. It will be ratified today. Thank you very much. So who's next? That's the end of the list.
We have two online, Mr. Chairman.
Kristin Dodd.
Hi there, thanks for hearing me. I agree with Mrs. Kramer and Mr. Rose on the topic of severance pay. I fail to see how severance has anything to do with the importance of one's position or with the importance of veterans themselves. I too respect our veterans, but my position on paying severance to departing county employees does not have anything to do with my respect for veterans or how important I feel the job of Veteran Services is. If an employee has been paid less than contracted or less than the published salary amount, and that has been clearly documented, then I could possibly see that being addressed on a case-by-case basis. This would be considered back pay based on a previous shortage of pay and not severance.
Exactly.
Well, then we shouldn't be calling it severance.
I never have.
Paying severance to one departing employee sets a bad precedent. County employees already have excellent benefits and retirement plans. If the county has extra money to throw at departing employees, then it should go back to the taxpayers. Although I'm fairly certain, especially with the DuFert culvert situation, I'm pretty sure we don't have extra money to be throwing around at departing employees. So if there's any discussion about any kind of severance pay being paid to any departing county employee, I am opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Tryman.
I think the other person was ahead of me, if you want to go in order.
Okay, well, all right. Oh, there you are, Sherry. Go ahead, Sherry.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, good. Sherry DeValley for the record. I do appreciate veterans. I also receive military benefits, so I totally understand the need for a Veteran Services officer. I do question, though, he's being paid, as my understanding, $17 an hour, and he's been there for eight years. That is not normally something that is qualified for a year's severance. It's not a retirement. And the other question is how fair it is to the other employees of the county. I do understand that there are many employees that get a severance package that usually equate to two to four weeks. There's no policy for it. It's done arbitrarily and not done for every employee. Now, I understand Brian's a great guy, very nice. He accepted the job at the pay that was offered. If it was unacceptable, you have had five years to correct that as you've been a commissioner for that long. You chose not to correct it at that time. Now, giving him $10,000 of your own money, great, wonderful, but that still leaves $50,000 for the public to pay for, and we're not doing the same things for all the employees. It's arbitrary, it's for friends-- It's arbitrary. It's for friends, as this man is your personal friend and helped with your campaign for governor and only your campaign for governor, as I understand it. So it does bring a lot of questions to the forefront. Why is this man being set aside as extremely special when he accepted the job and he is done with the job at eight years? Thank you.
Well, I will address that because, one, he never complained, and he never would because of his character. We found out when he decided he was going to retire that he had always been underpaid for what that job is supposed to pay. And we thought this is something that should be looked at. It has, and for everybody listening, it has never been called a severance pay for him. It has never been declared a year's salary for him. This is information that was put out by somebody who intentionally put it out to mislead the public so that y'all could come here and complain. It was a conversation between three commissioners, and that's all it was. No decision.
What is the standard pay for that job? What is the standard pay for that job? And what was it?
Just over what he's been getting.
You got a V S O right there. He can tell you.
I would like to pause. Can I ask a question? Do people have questions outside of this veteran, the money issue? Does anybody have a comment? Can do, Sherry, would you mind if we let the non-comment? Because this is on the agenda, and I, a lot's being said, and I don't want to waste the time that was supposed to be for you guys to talk about the agenda item.
Absolutely. I will defer and come back if necessary.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Well, after just being instructed by Commissioner Williams that I'm not allowed to talk about this issue, I will. I agree with several of the speakers. I don't think a bonus or severance or however you want to refer to it, I think it sets a dangerous precedent. I think Brian's done a stellar job. And at this point, I think that that would be a bad call. My main concern here is that an executive session, for those of us who have been on committees, whether it be central committee or commissions or whatever, executive sessions are meant for private conversations. Votes are then taken in public meeting. For things to be disclosed that were discussed in executive session, as we can see in this situation, it's dangerous. It's unethical. It's improper. And that needs to stop. When you are in any executive session, you need to feel the freedom to be able to speak in a private, non-disclosing situation. So stop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
I'm going to give a response to that statement. Executive session is specific per statute for narrow items. So compensation is actually supposed to be discussed openly. So what took place, if you put, this problem actually would be solved if on the agenda, for example, this is actually a good example. Look at our agenda on executive session, human resources. How many of you know what that means? None of you. If it said executive session, human resources, discussion to move human resources underneath the Board of Commissioners, would maybe somebody have a question about that? So I have asked repeatedly that we make our agenda clear. If you enter into an executive session and discuss something that is not covered by that statute, you do not get the extension of that protection because the public had a right to know. And I will clarify that in that meeting, when that topic happened, I was actually very clear. I said, this is not an executive session. I said, I was going to tell the public about it, and I actually cleared the verbiage. I said, this is what I'm going to say. Counsel was present. So you, this is a problem of how we've used executive session. To call everything executive session is not just for us to ramble. You guys are supposed to be involved in almost everything we do. That was not an executive session topic. I never released the name of the employee that this was about. I was very clear. Should we, as commissioners, give severance pay up to a year's based on a job well done? That is actually a public topic. It is not an executive session topic. So I didn't violate anything. And if anybody had poor ethics, it's the people that put those topics underneath the bushel when it belongs out in the light. It is, this is tax money. This is not my business, and that's what I told everybody. And I'm not going to conflate the idea of I don't care about a veteran now that Commissioner Bradshaw has told you who it was. They're not the same. It's actually because we care about veterans that we have to be consistent because if we don't have the funds in our budget to continue the services, we have failed our veterans. I didn't do anything wrong. I was transparent. And the way in which it's being described is not okay. I didn't, it wasn't unethical. I hope you feel it was unethical for people to seek it away from the community.
Thank you. Spence?
Spencer Hutchings for the record. You guys know who I am, right? Luke, have we met?
I think we've met.
Oh, okay. Wait, which Luke do we have today? Do we have happy, friendly Luke or do we have like Death Stare Luke? Death Stare Luke's coming, let me tell you.
Okay, Spence. Don't take everybody's time.
It's like, it's like talking.
No derogatory, no exact.
And same thing with Stephen. You know, I never know if I'm going to get Boss Hogg or Cartman. You will respect my authority. Anyway, what I'd actually like to talk about is something nobody else is talking about because they seem to have covered it up by something else, the fairgrounds. Hey, what's going on with the RV park? Did we get it rezoned? Did we?
That's up to the city.
That's up to, okay, it's up to the city, but we're still pursuing it even though the fairground still doesn't want to do it, right? The Fair Board still hasn't said they want to do this. The Fair Board has still asked for the grant not to be granted, right? The Fair Board doesn't want the money still, right? But you guys are still pursuing it. Look, look at the smart, you still can't say why you want, why you want their property. You know, the Fair Board has already said they want it on the opposite end of the fairgrounds, and you guys are still pursuing to put it in the space that was slated for the Future Justice Center. You know, I am just dying to find out why you actually want to do it because all the reasons that you've given, what little tiny, itty bitty tiny reasons you've given, have all been nonsense. You know, you're just making stuff up. You're pulling it out of thin air. And you sit there and smirk like you got some magic plan that you're going to take care of this, that you're going to, that I don't know about, and you just won't say it. I mean, what is so important about that piece of property? What is the difference between putting it on that piece of property in the opposite corner? And don't tell me it's the utilities because I've put utilities in before. It ain't that much money.
So are you offering to put the utilities in?
No, I'm telling you that I've done it before, and I know how much it costs. And I know the difference in cost between putting it where you guys say it needs to go and putting it a few hundred yards away. I know what that stuff costs, Steve.
Well, I appreciate your input, Spence. You got anything else?
Yeah, I want to know why you guys are still pursuing it. And I want to know why you can't drop this and you keep trying to have stuff covered up and you keep doing it in secret meetings away from the public, just like you're doing the severance thing.
But I appreciate the way you present it. Continue.
That's it. I'm asking, I'm asking for an answer.
This is public comment time.
That is, well, you, you've got lots to bloviate about when you feel like it, but when somebody actually asks you a question and expects an answer, as a public servant, I'm the public, you're my servant, I pay your salary so do all the rest of these people, I want to know what you guys are doing. It's not Asia.
City of Sandpoint asked for confirmation from the board. Go forward with the rezoning. If we wanted to build a courthouse there, it would have to be rezoned. It's zoned as a residential lot.
So you're rezoning it for?
Anything you would ever do.
So you're rezoning it for the Future Justice Center?
For whatever use. It still would have to be done.
So why are you rezoning it? For the RV park or for the Justice Center?
For whatever ends up being on there.
Well, what's, what is your plan?
Right now.
I mean, it's our property. The county owns it. What are you going to do with it?
Right now, it's directed towards RV park. You're asking.
The RV park that the Fair Board doesn't want.
You're asking questions that have been answered over and over again. You just don't like the answers.
No, you haven't answered them.
Okay, well.
So, so tell me why it has to be there. Why?
Design us a better deal.
Damn, Rose has given you three different options.
Tell him to do the engineering and bring it to us. We'll look at it.
Who authorized the engineering to be done?
We did.
You did?
Yeah.
Was that voted on?
The previous board did.
Oh, the previous board did. Is that where the 25 grand for Sewell?
Since 2019.
Oh, that's, that's the authorization for Sewell, the 25 grand. Is that right, Asia?
No, that was just part of it.
Yeah. So, you know, it just begs the question, who's lying here? You know, I mean, the people that look like they're covering stuff up or the one who looks like they're trying to expose the stuff? Who's lying? There's that, there's that smirk, Luke. Yeah. We know what you got, we know you guys are up to something. And sooner or later, it's going to come out. Maybe that's why you want to make sure people get severance packages because you know you're going to need one.
Call it what you choose to call it. Next?
Thank you, General.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Name for the record.
John Dupree for the record. I want to thank you for having open discussion. You've allowed a good amount of time, and it's greatly appreciated. Yeah, I know there's a lot of contention and stuff like that, but this is good. This is healthy, and I appreciate it. If I may make a request, can we have future meetings down where we had them before so we have room for people to sit down? Because obviously, this is a very popular thing that's going on, and it would be nice if we had space. Thank you.
That space was set up for something else today, so.
But whenever possible.
Thank you. Christina Nichols. You still, there you are. Took her hand down, changed her mind. Next?
Any more public comment?
Okay, Mr. Kramer?
I just.
Name for the record.
Rick Kramer for the record. I found it really telling, Mr. Bradshaw, when you started this conversation, you said, I've never read the job description of what this guy does, but I want to give him a year's severance.
I never said year. I never said severance.
Well, you wanted.
I never said that.
You want to give him the money, however you want to describe it, and you didn't even know what his job description is.
Says right here, severance, up to a year's salary. Says it right there, severance.
I didn't put that on there.
It's your agenda. You're in charge of it, as you so often speak all the time.
Talk to her. Her item. Next?
Mr. Rose?
You still haven't answered the question. You said he was a $17 an hour employee. What is a V S O's going rate?
I'd have to go across the hall to get the exact number.
Maybe $25 is a major rate there. Maybe he'd be your next V S O.
Sergeant?
My name's Aaron Klein. I'm a 33-year Army veteran. Two tours of combat. I like your mug. I hear all these words being minced about, you know, what, you know, severance package and this and that. But the bottom line is if the guy was underpaid, he's owed money, in my mind. So without, you know, rambling on, I just want to say I'm in favor of paying the man what he's owed.
Kristin Dodd?
I think I listen.
Let this young lady here. Name for the record.
My name is Sue Fagan, and I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. And I am absolutely stunned by the snarkiness of the people that are speaking in this room, the disrespect for our commissioners who are trying to do a job. If you have something to say, you can speak like a human being instead of being an asshole.
Thank you. Dave Bowman?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
I can. I want to thank you for assisting with the kids shooting the other day.
Always a good day. Couple of things here. One, Chairman Bradshaw, you said that there's, when Brian Donkey asked about what's the criteria for calling a special meeting, you dodged around it pretty well. Just said, well, it's various things. Well, it all depends. So I'd like to ask, what was the criteria or what were the criteria to make the last Friday special meeting, last Friday, for the zone change at the fairground property or, well, what you want to make the fairground property versus just bringing it forward today in a public meeting that where everybody could have had time to know about it ahead of time?
I didn't set that meeting. That would be Mr. Amit.
Well, for any one of you that can answer, what was the urgency of having that meeting on Friday versus bringing it to today?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, Dave. The reason why I scheduled the meeting for Friday is because we are on a timeline, and I wanted to have the meeting on Friday so that we can meet the timeline. I have repeatedly answered the question in regards to this project. I am opposed to raising taxes to support the maintenance and operations of the fair. I understand that there are some people who don't get it.
That's not answering my question. I'm on limited time here, so I'll just move on.
We'll give you more time, Dave.
Spencer, I'm going to answer for your question. I think that if we, down the road, we're going to find out probably that this whole thing with the fairgrounds is not about an RV park. It's going to be out, it's that land. Somebody wants to get their hands on that land. We're not going to know who it is until the time comes. We'll find out down the road. Mark my words. And then in response, along with Asia, in response to Debbie Tryman, you know, it's important to know that most of what happens in executive session can in fact happen in an open meeting. There's nothing wrong with bringing anything out in an open meeting unless it violates someone's privacy. That's the main thing, especially when it comes to anything to do with personnel. So nothing was said except by Chairman Bradshaw, who seems to have an issue with bringing it out in public, who brought the gentleman's name out in public. So Debbie Tryman, you're wrong. Asia, good on you. You got it.
Is that it, or did we lose connection? Okay.
No, that's it. I'm done.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Kristin Dodd?
I just want to ask and ask now so that you can be prepared when this agenda item gets brought up later. How much are you suggesting be paid to Brian, and what is the calculation based on?
We never came up with an exact figure. It was just a discussion.
The dollar amount was $60,000.
Right, so I would like to know what that is based on.
I'll explain more about this agenda item in the agenda. And then make sure to raise your hand for that question. There was a dollar amount. And the word severance means at the time that you sever, so it's a reasonable word for the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, Sherry?
That other person had their hand up first. Would you like them to go first?
Oh, Chris, Christina, it's up to you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and ask my questions. This goes back to the special meetings. I understand there are two special meetings scheduled for tomorrow because on a day that Commissioner Williams was scheduled to be out of the office. So when they were noticed, everybody knew that she was scheduled to be in Clark Fork. Is there a reason that these meetings had to be done on a day when she was scheduled to be out of the office instead of a day when all three commissioners were scheduled to be in the office?
You mind if I take that one?
Go ahead.
As I'm sitting looking at my calendar, the way we schedule is we pull up the commissioners' calendars. So right in front of me, I have Commissioner Williams' calendar up. I have Commissioner Amit's calendar up. On Commissioner Williams' calendar, it says 11:15 to 1:15. The bid opening is scheduled for 2 o'clock, and the public hearing by statute, that we have to have by statute, was scheduled for 3 o'clock. So that's all I have to go on. If it says 11:15 to 1:15, we schedule around their other meetings. It's the best that we can do.
So you gave her 45 minutes. Did you cover with her if that's enough time to get back to the office?
I did not ask that question.
Is that normally asked of the other commissioners?
I base it off their calendar.
Their calendar is set by what we, I will be out. Their calendar is set by what we, I will be out from 12 to 1. That means at 1:01, I'm probably going to be here. So that's what they have to go by.
Well, it seems to me that the items that are on the special meeting agendas, as were noticed the same day as this meeting, could have gone on this agenda. It shouldn't have been a problem, and it would have been easier for the public, which is what I thought the goal was, to engage the public in these issues. Apparently, I was wrong on that one. Maybe you can correct me that you'd rather not have the public engaged like this?
That's what this time is for.
No, I meant on the meetings for tomorrow. There's several special meetings you do not allow public comment, such as last Friday.
That would be up to the chairman. I'm going to clear that up for you, Sherry. A public hearing requires that everyone get an opportunity to speak. An open meeting by statute, set by the state of Idaho, does not require that we allow public comment. Most times, we do. Sometimes, we do not. But it's a courtesy given by the Board of Commissioners. It's not a mandated thing. The state statute actually says quite the opposite. So, thank you, Sherry. Christina?
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Oh, good. Okay. I've had to turn on two computers because I can't get volume on one of them. Anyways, Christina L. Nicholas Anderson, for the record. Thank you for hearing me out. I'd just like to say that while I appreciate the work of all of our county employees and veterans are near and dear to my heart, I don't think it's really appropriate or fair to place more value on one employee than another. And I know that there's lots of jobs that people have their heart in it more than their pocketbook, and that there are jobs people accept even if the rate isn't commensurate with the work they do. I think that's true in a lot of positions. And so I don't think it's appropriate to pay out employees when they leave. Otherwise, our funds are going to continue to go to past employees and not allow us to appropriately pay current employees. Additionally, I was not aware of this meeting, that this gentleman had only been in the position eight years. For me, eight years on a job is considered infancy and wouldn't even be entitled to barely a retirement of a position, much less a payout upon discharge or retirement or quitting or whatever you want to call it. So I respect his position. I agree it's valuable. And yet, I wouldn't want to say his position is more valuable than anybody in that room, their position where they work. So I appreciate the gesture. I think it's kind. And Steve, I have to say, I respect the fact you were willing to give some of your own salary. That really speaks to how passionate you are about this. And at the same time, I don't know that it's appropriate for us to be using taxpayers' money to selectively give. And if we did give a severance package to another recently departed employee, I think it was grossly inappropriate as well. In fact, grossly inappropriate to give it to any employee who has had any negative demarks on their plate, so to speak. But I won't elaborate on that. Thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah. It's like Ms. Kramer said. Usually, those things are on a case-to-case basis. They're looked at, they're evaluated, they're talked about, they're decided on. We didn't decide on anything. We simply had a conversation. Somebody took it upon themselves to throw it out there and mislead the public. Ms. Noella?
I'm letting you slide on those little slaps, but.
Okay, that's fine. I don't care if you let me slide or not. But right now, Christine Noella has the mic.
Actually, Christine's good with me saying something real quick, aren't you, Christina?
Well, the chair hasn't recognized you, but has recognized her.
Commissioner Bradshaw, I'm not doing anything but sitting here. And so I would appreciate if you exemplify the office that you hold and what you say you believe in during this meeting. Because I don't throw things your direction negatively, and it's getting really old. And if you haven't noticed, it only brings more people to these meetings. It doesn't make us look good. So I didn't do anything that was wrong.
Of course you didn't. Christina, go ahead.
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. So what I would like to say this morning is I do appreciate the hard work that you can tell was put in by Asia Williams on the DuFort-Vay rezone. It would be really awesome if everyone did that. And, you know, it just goes to show that there's care and concern when these projects are being looked at. And if every one of you, all three of the commissioners did that, it would probably bring a new light and more confidence in our commissioner board there. Also, I'd like to add that the meeting, you know, everybody else has pretty well said everything they had to say about the meeting. I felt that they presented it properly. But I also, you know, would like to have been notified or had an idea of something aside from a quick 24-hour notice. I appreciate all the work that you guys do, and hopefully, we can get some more of these things ironed out. Still a little confused about the RV, and I hope that we find answers. And I'd also like to add that, you know, with things, new elections coming up here in the very near future, and also just such a beautiful prayer that we have in the mornings before we start these meetings, I just wish that everyone would allow these prayers to touch their heart and just know that we are in the presence of God. Thanks for all you do, and have a great day.
Thank you. Ms. Kramer?
Jennifer Kramer, for the record. I just want to clarify. When I said case by case, it's business decision by business decision, not employee by employee. So there's a very distinct difference there, and it was not at all based on the personnel. It was based, no, it's based on the actual state of the business.
Lot of dynamics. Major, did you have something you wanted to add? Yeah. Okay.
Spencer Hutchings, again, I have something I want to add. I'd like everybody to remember Obamacare, and every year or two, we go through this thing where the budget has to go through. The federal government will stop working, and then we've got the, you know, you can read it after we pass it thing. You know, just keep in mind, every time somebody's in a hurry, like Luke is, to get this stuff done, there's usually something bad behind it. When has anything ever been pushed through in a hurry that's been good? Name one. Okay? There's bad motives here, and people can see you have bad motives, and we're just waiting to find out what the bad motives are.
DuFort Road went through pretty quick.
Well, isn't it amazing that the roads that we expect to be functioning, you guys repair after it falls apart when nobody notices it's falling apart? Because you don't have a replacement schedule for the culverts, because nobody keeps an eye on the culverts until just recently. And even then, you guys still aren't putting together a replacement schedule for the culverts. The culverts last X number of years. You need to have a replacement schedule. Excuse me, I'm trying to speak. As, you know, as a man of God, as somebody who purports to be a preacher, you would think you have the courtesy to let someone speak when they're not offending you. You guys don't have a replacement schedule for the culverts. You've never had one in the whole history of the county. You know they only last so long. There's only so many in the county. You can put them on a list and replace them on a schedule instead of shutting down a major artery of the county for months. Thank you.
I'm going to be a Jason Top representative here for a second. Jason's been working real hard, and they're thinking that they might have that road open by the end of this month. They're putting in double time. And then he did email that. We received a grant from LTAC in the amount of, I think it was $100,000. So they understand the impact that that has, and they've been working double time on that.
Mr. Corn, did you have anything? Okay. You out there, Reg?
Yes, Reg Crawford. Thank you. I wanted to bring up the hearing examiner time. We've got a few really big, impactful files coming before the hearing examiner, such as on July 5th, there's a subdivision for 117 residential lots in the Kootenay area of City Impact. And I just want to make a plea once again that hearings that are this substantial, it's very difficult for the public to attend a 1:30 in the afternoon on a Wednesday. We've given the hearing examiner a lot of power in that he makes these decisions, and the board can just accept those decisions without holding another hearing. So in the interest of having public input when these decisions affect them, it would be great to have these hearings at a time when the public is available. Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, that changes when we get our review of development impact. One of the things that they actually recommend is for some projects that are that large, that before you even apply with planning, that you hold a public meeting with the community so that the community is with you as you're going through that process so you can potentially vet out some issues and concerns. So hopefully, we do see a change in that. Because I've heard a lot of people have issue with the large tracts of land changes that go before the examiner that don't come up to your attention.
Thank you.
Teresa Heisner?
Good morning. This just jarred my memory. I did want to mention, speaking of large developments, are you guys aware of a very large development that's being approved for Old Town? And we're talking hundreds of homes in a three-course phase, which our Bonner County Sheriff's is contracted with the city because they don't have a PD, nor do they really have any of the resources for these large tracts of land to be developed. And my concern is the communication between the counties and the cities. I think it's so crucial because these cities are using our county taxpayer services. So are you guys aware of this giant development?
We usually don't get all that information until it starts coming this way. We're not allowed to comment on anything that we may be having to vote on. That would violate open meeting law. And so, yeah, anything that big is going to end up here at this desk at some point in time.
Okay. My concern is, in speaking with Milton several times when he was our director for planning, he always, he was very adamant, in fact, saying that there was a serious lack of communication between the two entities. So it's a huge concern. I think everyone should be really concerned about it because these cities, yes, we want the development to be in the cities, but it's going to spill over onto our highways. And we all know that our infrastructure really, really cannot handle these large developments. So thanks for hearing me out this morning. Have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's 10.
Debbie?
It's 10 o'clock.
I took up about the first 13 minutes, and I told them I'd give that to it only in. 10 minutes. Debbie, you got something?
Yeah, I got another quick comment. I've heard Spencer and a couple other people ask repeatedly. Yeah, hi, Spence. I see you. Why that piece of land? I actually took the time to go out to that piece of land with Luke, and it is abundantly appropriate. There is so much other land left to do the $100 million justice facility that I cannot imagine Spencer is going to advocate spending that kind of money. But that's an aside. Maybe, maybe he will. But the location of that piece of property right there, that little strip of land, and I would really recommend, Spence, if you haven't been out there, that you go out and see exactly where they're talking about putting it. It's completely appropriate. Plenty of land left to do whatever other choices are made. And I'd just like to say, Commissioner Williams, you think you've never thrown negative comments towards Luke and Steve during these meetings. You are delusional. You have instigated so much dissension, it's appalling. I would appreciate it, for one, if you stop it. The people in this room do not represent the majority of the people in Bonner County. They are a loud, rude minority.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Debbie.
Christine Noella? You got your hand up? Okay. Mr. Rose?
Okay. So these public meetings are designed for you to avoid the open meeting law violations. So if you have anything you want to discuss on these topics, such as was brought up with this large development, now is the time to do it. This is the place to do it. This does not violate the open meeting law. If you're referring to your discussions with possibly Mayor Connolly, and you don't want to discuss them, well, you can't discuss that with them in private, but you can discuss all that here. Secondly, in discussion of open, public meeting stuff, I haven't heard it brought up yet, and I'm thinking maybe you will, but I'm going to try to jump the gun on this one. That I was at the open meeting for the fair boards, and Commissioner Omart described a situation that I would think would be rather important for everybody to know. But it seems strange, for months about talking to this RV park, this has not come up. I did a document request for it, and I've been told I got to wait 10 days for it. I did it to the city as well. You don't think Luke, Mr. Omart, has connections to planning and zoning of the city of Sandpoint having come from that board? Yes, he does. So I can't get the document from 10 days from anybody, but I know you discussed it, and I'm just pleading for you to tell us everything you told the fair board in your opening comments on Monday last week. Not this past Monday, yesterday, but a week ago. So open that up. Secondly, Idaho code. You talk about the ability to comment in a public hearing. Can you name the code? Is it 71304? Is it 171306? Is it one of those two? Because those are the two Idaho codes that I'm aware of. But discussion in this comes from county ordinance, and that's 1200B. And we've talked about this many, many, many times. It's very clear. You keep referring to, "I can't do it under state code." You have an ordinance that also applies.
I never said I can't.
I know exactly what you're doing. You're evading the situation.
Thank you, Dan Rose. Teresa, did you have something else? Teresa, you got?
No, no, no. Sorry. I must have accidentally raised my hand. Sorry.
Sherry? We got about four minutes left.
Okay. Yeah. This is back to the meetings for tomorrow, with one of them being about raising taxes. I'd like to still get an answer to my question as to why were they put on special meetings and not put on today's agenda? That's very important. So could you tell me why they had to be put into special meetings and not on today's agenda?
Well, I'm pretty sure there's no meeting to talk about raising taxes right now, so.
Well, raising the.
Are in the next couple of weeks.
Isn't that what raising solid waste fees is all about?
We'd have to look at it when it comes forwards.
That's what's on the agenda tomorrow for a special meeting, correct?
I think so.
Well, that would be raising your taxes.
All I know is I'm supposed to be here, and we're going to discuss whatever it is that solid waste brings forward.
And it could have been put on today's agenda.
That's not when they put it up. They're the ones that put it on there. I didn't put it. I do not set the other department's agendas. I do not set the other elected's schedule that is theirs. I can only tell you what I put on the agenda and why it's scheduled there. I do not have that answer for you.
Spencer Hutchings. And for clarification, when the county, the city, the state, or the federal government reaches into my pocket for anything, it's a tax. So you can call it a fee, whatever you want to call it, but it's a tax. And Debbie, I have been out to the fairgrounds, believe it or not, and I have seen the property where the fair board wants to actually put the RV park in the opposite corner of the fairgrounds. And it's a beautiful place with lots of nice trees instead of an open piece of dirt. So, yeah, I have seen the piece of ground. And why they want to put it in a piece of dirt that seems to have no consequence, that would just interfere with any future expansion at the fairground or at the sheriff's department or the justice center, as opposed to putting it in the trees where it would be a nice place to park your RV, is beyond me, and it's obviously beyond the comprehension of two of the three commissioners also.
Thank you, Spence. So it is 10:09, and we will go into our regular business meeting. So order of agenda.
I move to amend the order. The executive session, human resources. It's not only not descriptive. I was told that the human resources section is a discussion to move human resources under the board. And legal has advised this board that that topic belongs in open meetings. So we should move it to the open portion. And I was told that this was put on the agenda by Commissioner Amit, so we should just slide, if that's what that topic is, up to his side. if that's what that topic is, up to his section, not an executive session. And then the other two items, personnel doesn't tell you the, what the issue was, so I don't know what those ones are. If you look at emergency services, they actually tell you what their executive session is. But we were advised to make that amendment.
I will second the motion for discussion. Mr. Chairman, that is not the topic. And that is not the reason why I have an executive session. For personnel, it is to discuss a employee at a position by name as is fully appropriate.
Okay. Well, in that case, change the motion to amend or?
No, because it seems odd that myself and the prosecutor's office all got it wrong and there was a back and forth. So what's the department that you're putting this personnel issue, the hiring of?
What are we looking at here, Ms. Williams?
First, it says human resources.
Yep, and that's the one I didn't talk about.
It, the topic is human resources.
Correct. And that, and I'm going to wait to have that conversation until we're in executive session as appropriate according to Idaho open meeting law 74-20.
Sure, this is
And yes, I'm waiting.
This is a fantastic example. Because when we go into executive session and we hit the topic of human resources, that's like just saying county business. And the topic is not covered by statute and I discuss what happens because it should have gone in. Don't be mad if you want to be nondescript. Just go in knowing that you're taking that risk and I'm going to hold you to the statute. It doesn't tell us what human resources is, doesn't tell you what you're going to discuss. So I recommend that you provide information. If you don't want to provide it, then we run the risk of me talking about it. Because it has to be very, it's a, the statute tells you it's very narrow. Even the presence of legal in the same room during executive session, that doesn't justify it. It has to be something specific and you're not providing that specificity.
Well, I guess we'll find out that information when we go into executive. If it's supposed to be public, then it'll be on Tuesday's. So we have a first and a second rule. Call vote.
No, we have to actually adopt the order since he's saying that he's
You made the motion on that second. I was prepared to vote.
Oh, he, okay.
No.
Yes.
No. Okay, order of agenda. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion to advance it.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes. District two, Commissioner report.
All right. I wanted to start off with something good. Old Town, we did our Old Town follow-up on the 15th and thank you for the hand signals. And we were able to get, Road and Bridge was present and so was Ponderay County. And Jason renegotiated the agreement between Bonner County and that county to the point where it actually even included weekend snow plowing. They identified the contacts for the other county for Old Town and they came with a stack and they were organized. And they walked away feeling like all their issues were resolved and are slated. There's two items that Jason's going to complete for that community. But one of the positive things that came out was also they formulated their own kind of neighborhood newsletter so that they could stay connected and know who to contact before it gets to be to the point where everybody's mad. And that, that's a big takeaway because they structured and organized, gave their own liaisons and it, and were able to come back after our meeting and actually give the credit to the people within the county that are doing the work for their community and feeling really good about where they're going. We also got Chase Youngdale came and we talked about weeds. We learned some stuff. I was shocked about some rules that I didn't know. Wasted a whole bunch of weed killer for no reason based on his discussion. But he came out with books and he did a drive-through of the area and gave some input to the community. So it was a really good opportunity to watch from January, because they were the first community that contacted me to now, to see that they feel good about Bonner County and the response to what their needs were. So I'm going to continue to do that and just, we did try to let Road and Bridge have a pass on coming since we had the DuFort Road debacle, but they were prepared and they came and they answered the community and the community felt really good about that. So I'm really thankful for all of the county members that were responsive to the slew of emails that the community sent and allowed us to get to a point where we feel good about what's happening in Old Town. I am going to send out a, a kind of a write-up of where we are with the last two things. There's going to be a a mirror placed on one of their corners that there's a little bit of a speed issue. One thing I did learn and maybe everybody else knew was, when you ask for a speed check, it isn't like people want everybody to go slower. And so you want a speed check, but if everybody's going 40 and you want them to go 20, you actually get changed to the 40. So it's not necessarily a good idea. So we, we learned a lot and it was a really good kind of a setting. So much so that we had a lot less people than we had the first few times we were having meetings. And that was because people trusted that we were moving in the right direction. This week I will be in Clark Fork and I will try and make it down to the meeting. The, I have some work to do with that community, some concerns that we have to address with respect to how we record things and some concerns about their particular community that is unique to Elk Meadows. And so I will be there also working with their senior center, helping centers to be a little bit more solvent so that they're not dependent on that emergency fund for their, their service group because the service group of the elderly population has grown in Clark Fork, which means that doesn't, doesn't necessarily come with money from the community itself. But we have really dedicated people in that center who looked for grants and do in fundraisers and the hard work to bring notice to it and to bring money into their community. And hopefully as a county, we'll see that they don't need to ask the county for money because they were able to achieve that through that proactive dialogue in their own community. So I am going to address all the other topics in their particular section, but that was the update. I do want to, I didn't ask anybody to come to this meeting because I knew there were going to be a lot of discussion about those items. But I do think it's right for us to ask for Panhandle Health to have that conversation with us before we have the Tishler Bies representative come because my goal is that we look at the future plan of Bonner County as a whole, not this micro look at individual sections because what can happen then is that you then end up having to revisit that section when it doesn't fit the overall picture because we didn't look broad enough. But one of the things we have to have a meeting of the minds is, what is Bonner County doing? And what is our process before we go to other areas that potentially will cost us money like getting a consultation? Because if we're not on a solid foundation, it will cost us more. I was thankful for Panhandle Health, very detailed, and John reading the very lengthy letter, but I didn't want to cut it up because it was very specific to what we're doing and how we can improve. My goal is that we don't just say we've met the base, but that we exceed it. We are having an influx of people where we're feeling the change very quickly, but that doesn't mean as government, we can actually adjust as quickly as those changes happen. So in order to do that, we have to have a better plan, which includes budgeting and a lot to do with planning and how can we increase our economic development in what is really a retirement community where people are coming for refuge, which means they're not giving us their money to, as they take out of our community. So we're not getting as many deposits as we are withdrawals, but we're still responsible. And my, my fear is as a county government, when the city says we can't, it's the county that has to step in and plow because the city doesn't plow. And so we need to work with the cities to have a good understanding as we move forward. That's what my overall vision is, to kind of go the route of master plan building without with cutting as much of the cost of building a master plan out by going to the agencies that are willing to give us those free consultations and free direction so that we can have a meeting of the mind. That's my goal. And when we're talking about the RV campground, the point of contention, it's not the sheriff's land. And I know people say that, use that word because it's easy. That's not what we're discussing. We're not discussing, should we extend a jail? We're not discussing the jail. We're discussing a piece of land that has been identified from not just prior boards, but the people at large of, when you need to expand, we have to expand somewhere. And the reason it's thought of as sheriff's land is because it's near that section, but it isn't, that's not what we're arguing. We're not, I'm not sitting here arguing for, we need more prisoners at this jail. That's not what we're arguing for. It's when we, we need a court, look at our courts, look at our legal team. We need a spot and that was identified. And I do understand, and I want to clarify this, we do not have a drawing to scale of a justice center on that land. What we have is called a concept, which means here's a rectangle and I'm going to draw where I want to put stuff. That's not a to-scale drawing. It doesn't identify what the use is, the floor plan, any of that. We haven't gotten to that point, so we shouldn't state things that are not accurate. What we're talking about from my position is the land is encumbered, not because I said so. It is encumbered because it has, it is county land that is not solely in the control of the fairground and there is a difference between the two. So to say it's all county, it's not accurate. That's not an accurate representation. If we expand, where do we expand? And if we push forward, where do we push? That's the question. So I, it, we get the appeal to emotion of talking about, I like the sheriff, I hate the sheriff, we don't need a jail, I don't want a federal prison. None of that is what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the piece of land. We don't want to give up the piece of land for something that has what has a 22-year requirement that we leave it there. Because if for only one reason, we have not done the future plan of Bonner County to say that we can put that land in a position where it's no longer in play. We haven't done that. That's what I'm asking for. That is a reasonable plan. It's not negative, it's not divisive. I am going to point out the errors of it, but it is to show the point of which I'm coming from. I have not heard an argument that's reasonable against, wait, we didn't plan, we just know we want a campground. That is not planning. That's just the I-wants, I-thinks, I-feels. I'm saying, show me the financial responsibility of the decision when I show you the rules. Don't care about the players. I'm pretty process oriented and it should be that we're following a process and procedure. We're not. And you saw that on a 24-hour meeting scheduled on Friday. I'm not in this building on Fridays. I canceled and I came and I told everybody about the rezoning. It shouldn't be, in my opinion, that we set 24-hour meetings because we can and say that we met the statute. I want to be held to a higher standard. And I think the county shouldn't say we met the bare minimum. We know that the community cares about this campground. Well, there wasn't anything gained by doing it on Friday. We hit weekend holiday today. What was the, what did we gain by doing it on Friday? But it did cost us. It cost us the community feeling of we're moving forward as a community because it's divisive. And it started divisive because we started with, you can't talk, you can't talk mute. It was divisive for no reason because we didn't get any, there was no timeline adjustment. We celebrated the Day of Freedom for some reason, which I protested against, but I worked. But it's, that, that's, we need to think more than, are we meeting the minimum requirements as elected officials? I don't think that, I'm not in agreement with this 24-hour because we can, because people have an interest in it. So that's kind of my, my goal. I'm going to keep doing the working with communities. I'm going to work with Mayor Connolly in August for Priest River, saving out July just because of BOEs and we'll see where that happens. But I'll continue to work with Clark Fork as the schedule shows. And so that's kind of my update. Thanks for dealing with my need to walk out during this meeting. Any questions for District two about any of my report out? There was a lot that has happened in Old Town. Nope, we're all good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Omert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I read from some of the Idaho statutes that this county has and continued to comply with. 31-807, management of county property. A board of county commissioners shall have the power and authority to purchase received by donation or lease any real or personal property necessary for the use of the county. 31-807, now for 31-822, maintenance of fairgrounds and transfer property to fair district. This is under Title 31, Chapter 8, so counties and county law and powers and duties of Board of Commissioners. To contract to purchase a site, grounds or parks on which to hold public fairs or exhibitions, to care for and maintain the same, regulate the use thereof, and in their discretion to let demise or lease the same to the State of Idaho or the Department of Agriculture for such public fair or exhibition. It remains very simple. I am focused on revenue because if we do not focus on fees for use, what we are doing in order to maintain that facility is to use taxpayer dollars. If revenue is available, I believe we should take it.
Can I ask you a question on that?
I'm just giving my report.
Okay.
So this weekend, I took my daughters to the range. There was NRA shooting day and I want to say thank you publicly to the Bonner County sportsmen for holding a wonderful class and doing it. There was kids there. Dave Bowman was my oldest daughter's coach. Thank you, Dave. It was great. She was very happy. It was a really good event. Last week I answered lots of emails. We had a very lively file and there was 250 approximate, 247 to be exact was the number. Reach outs from people that were concerned about that zoning and that will be continued to the 26. Mr. Rose, you will get all of the documents as requested. In regards to special meetings, special meetings are held in accordance with state code. Just, and we do contact our attorney when appropriate. And then finally for, here are some answers for Mr. Martin and Wayne. I don't know if you're out there today. Yep, there you are, Wayne. Hello, Wayne. Okay, Wayne, you asked questions about different phases of the campground. And in successive phases, if we get the grant funding, we will pave this expansion area as was done on the other one. And then there would also be a bathroom with showers put in. How do I figure out my revenue? 34 sites at $25 a day for one half the year would equal $153,000, Wayne. So I'm mul, I'm doing math. That's how I got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, consent agenda.
Chairman. Got a question, please report. Can you mention my name?
Of him.
So the code says, public document requests are to be turned around in three days unless they're abnormally large. And so I didn't ask for
Can he step forward so we can hear him better?
P O R, Public Request.
15 days.
Public request is a three-day return unless they are overly large and take more time to fix. What I asked for was a contract from 2008. That's not overly large. It's very easy to find and it doesn't need 10 days to be prepared for delivery. So I know you're going to give them to me in 10 days. I'm asking you to comply with the law and do, how do we say, not just the minimum, supply the document within the three days that the document request law says and not the 10 days as the, how do we say, abnormal condition? Thank you. And you didn't even mention the expenses in that half-year three, 34 sites at $25 a day. There's no expenses in there. That's just revenue.
Thank you, Dan. Oh, consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Omert?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Prosecutor's Office. Good morning, Sir William.
All right, Commissioners, this is Bill Wilson. For the record, before you is a proposed resolution authorizing the destruction of some records that have been produced in the prosecutor's office over the years. We have stored some very old documents from random civil cases and other matters in the Calvary Chapel building. And our team over there that is preparing the building for demolition recognized that those records couldn't be destroyed without your permission. I have looked through them and they are just random civil matters, nothing that has any material value anymore. We would anticipate that this would be the last kind of resolution that we would need from you, given that all of our documentation is digital going forward, but we need this permission to get rid of those records in preparation for the demolition of that building.
Right. Based on the information before us, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the destruction of records from the prosecutor's office as discussed.
I second the motion.
And that would be Resolution 2020. And that would be Resolution Twenty-Two Three dash forty-eight. Roll call vote.
Mr. Ahmet.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Willie. Dave Shook. Long time no see. How the heck are you?
Well, how are you?
Hanging in there like a hare and a biscuit, which I hope you don't find. Of course, if Ron finds one, I'll laugh.
I'm going to assume that's good. Thank you for your time this morning. Good morning, everyone. We received two responses to our recent request for qualifications for engineering services for the airports department. Ardura and Century West, the respondents are both highly qualified consultants with extensive airport design experience. In accordance with the FAA Advisory Circular One Five Zero dash Five One Zero Zero dash Fourteen E, we applied a numerical rating factors to our predetermined selection criteria in order to objectively define the benefits of each consultant. Results of that process selected Ardura as the prime candidate for Bonner County airports. I recommend entering into contract negotiations, negotiations with Ardura.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county engage Ardura in contract negotiations to act as Bonner County Airport's engineering consultant.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Ahmet.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am. Emergency management.
Thank you.
We got a Bob Howard or somebody out there? There. You're going to be the emergency? Hopefully, we don't have one.
Nick Zoller, Fire Mitigation Program Manager for Bonner County. Today, we have one agenda item and it is a contract between Bonner County and the American Firefighter Company to provide project work for the treatment and/or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations in compliance with specifications for the bonfire program. There will be no county match as this contract will be funded from an Idaho Department of Lands grant. I would recommend the Board of County Commissioners accept and sign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and the American Firefighter Company.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuels treatment between Bonner County and American Firefighter Company for project work on the bonfire program funded by an Idaho Department of Lands grant with no county match.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Ahmet.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes. Justice Services.
Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services, for the record. I have two items this morning, similar in nature. The first one, I'm asking that we be able to surplus a 2006 Ford EC3 van, which is no longer needed by our department. We did send this out to see if another department within the county could utilize this vehicle and we were declined on most fronts, or on all fronts, actually. So we would just be asking to surplus this to the Bonner County Auction.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution Twenty-three dash forty-nine. Surplus equipment as authorized by Justice Services to surplus a 2006 Ford EC3 van with the VIN ending in five four nine three to be sold at the next scheduled Bonner County Auction.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Ahmet.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead, Sheri.
When is the auction?
It's rolling because we do it now on public.
It's a, it's on a public website. It's a rolling auction. We can add things on there at any time.
And will it be on your front page when it schedules come up?
I'd be more than happy to send Sheri.
She'll send you the link when she gets it uploaded.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Okay, Ron.
And the second item, we have a 2005 utility trailer, which we've outgrown and so we put that out also to all county departments and Emergency Management would like to have that once, if it's approved to surplus it as they feel they can utilize that trailer.
I move to approve Resolution Twenty-three Fifty. Surplus equipment authorized Justice Services to surplus a 2005 utility trailer with the VIN ending in eight two nine six to be transferred to Bonner County Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Ahmet.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for getting that much fly out of vehicles.
Yeah, well, we tried.
Yeah.
All right, do you have a good excuse?
You may. Hey, solid waste.
Good morning. Whoops, just going to lower it because I'm short. He's not going to stay. Melissa Galt for the record. On January 31st, 2017, Commissioners approved Resolution Seventeen-eleven stating that the departments may only pre-obligate the county to third parties in the amounts at or below $5,000. Solid Waste may need to occasionally spend over $5,000 due to the change orders for the Colburn Improvements Project. In order to keep the construction moving for, moving forward and have no interruption by the contractor, Solid Waste is requesting to increase the spending authority to $20,000 for the Colburn Improvements Project and allow the Solid Waste Director to have the ability to approve such expenditures.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Twenty-three dash fifty-one stating that Solid Waste may pre-obligate the county at or below $20,000 for the Colburn Improvements Project so long as they have budget authority.
I'll second the motion to advance it for discussion. So on this one, is there, because it says occasional spend, is there a reason that it couldn't just be a phone call and get a verbal approval of the individual versus giving a blanket $20,000 increase?
Well, usually change orders for construction has to go through B O C C and with the timeline for the meetings, we don't want to hold up the project that long.
Mm-hmm. And so I'm asking, could it be a verbal so that it's?
Yep.
Instead of?
I believe that would be okay.
Because on this one, what we're saying is we need to occasionally do it, but you're wanting to permanently increase it.
No, this is only for the Colburn Improvements Project, that's it.
I know, for the project though. So is there, since it doesn't happen regularly, is there a reason that we just wouldn't do a verbal for the spend instead of changing the spend?
And that would be fine also, as long as we have verbal authority.
Bill still here?
Bill isn't. And I, there are some, we've had this happen before. Road and Bridge is different than this department. And because their costs are, they hit that dollar amount that exceeds five. And I know this is a specific project, but this, in my opinion, why is this, we could accomplish their needs as well as the auditing of managing a project by a phone call to the chair for verbal approval that then goes, not just raising it to 20. Because that's, I think that that's what we were doing with some of other programs, not just raising it.
I just want to make sure that that clears legal's deal because if we approve a purchase over 5,000, it still has to, it would have to be ratified in a public meeting.
Correct. And so, and this is an example of where I think a 24-hour meeting would be appropriate because we could just say we're going to pin it to a date certain for tomorrow and address this because Solid Waste will be there tomorrow. That would be my, my vote, not to approve it, but to have that discussion. So I would move to pin this to a date certain tomorrow during that time when Solid Waste is already here. Because I want to be consistent with the departments and we've done something different on this kind of issue.
And the reason we did that for a road and bridge is because just about anything happens to a road grader or a truck, other than running out of fuel, it's going to be over $5,000.
Right.
And it would hold up getting that piece of equipment back in operation for at least two weeks. And so that was the reason for bumping that up and, which is similar reason here, is to not hold up the job site and which would also cut into the construction time that we're kind of restricted to in North Idaho. But yeah, we could do a verbal approval and ratify it the next day or as soon as possible.
Is there something about?
Either way would probably work.
That dollar amount has to do with something that a prior board put in place. And so I don't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward the way this is.
What say you, Commissioner Ahmet?
Uh, I'm, well, I'm looking at Mr. Ferguson back there, but it is my understanding that when we're working on a project that has costs like this, time is money. And I don't know, how much does a change order spend for that? It's reasonable to think that a change order at this job is going to be more than $5,000. This is a specific project that has been budgeted for. They are doing the site and the faster they get it down, the sooner that the, the users of the Solid Waste site benefit from this. So I see the, I see the virtue in moving as specified for this project in the interest of getting the project complete as soon as possible.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it will simplify things for us. In this case, we have a lot of oversight about what we're spending and where we're spending it. So kind of how the USDA works right now is that we, we see a need for a change order, the engineer, the design engineer, and issues a work change directive. That goes to the contractor who then provides a quote, then the engineer reviews the quote, and then we send the quote to the USDA for approval. And then, so they would check the funds that we have left. We do the same thing on our end. This basically gives us a little bit more leeway because we are tracking our budget very closely, we're required to, not only in Solid Waste, but in the auditor's level as well. So basically, I, I feel like this gives us a lot more flexibility. It doesn't take up your guys' time. We're, we're being careful with our money and we're only spending what we need to spend, so.
And the contract, I believe, has a buffer in there figured in for change orders.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Projects this size that didn't have a change order from start to finish would be like the first one on planet Earth.
Right, right, that would be.
So that is a pretty common thing.
Yeah.
But a phone call wouldn't slow that process down. And so my issue isn't, it isn't someone's not doing something, it's that the $5,000 number was given specifically related to holding a county responsible for a dollar amount and legal came up with that number. And so when we hit road and bridge, that, that was, there was a reason given for that one because it was usual and customary that they went beyond the 5,000. This is a specific project and so without being able to ask Bill, is, a, a phone call wouldn't negatively impact what you're asking to do. It actually probably would be faster because it was verbal. And because it still has to go through the grant in order for the change to spend. It's just the notification to the county is being expedited, but you're not expediting the grant side of it, so.
So what, what, kind of what we're looking at is this will give us, or Solid Waste, the authority to sign the change orders themselves. So even getting a verbal from the commissioner, the chairman, or whomever, we would still have to go to the board and have them sign it at some point, which, which would slow us down quite a bit when you're looking at processing the pay, the pay requests on a monthly basis. So right now, we are processing our pay requests on the 14th for this project. So that gives us a very limited window from the beginning of the month to get on the agenda for approval. So, so when you contrast that with, you know, Bob Howard or whomever, being able to sign that change order, you know, checking their funds, checking what we have left, and then approving the change order, then sending that off to the USDA or the contractor for their concurrence, it simplifies things for us in that regard. So, so you, so basically it will streamline our pay requests. It will keep all our change order pay requests within the same month as the billing for the project overall, which is what we're trying to do.
And I understand that, but I also see that part of what happens when we make it streamlined for the business function is we also then remove the people being able to check on what we're doing. And for me, I don't, I don't know why we did it, the $5,000 was certain. I just did, that, that's my question of, I don't see how a phone call stops the process of the project moving forward. It just says you still have to come in, in the open public and say, we had to spend $25,000 on this particular part.
So it wouldn't necessarily stop the project. It would, it would slow the, our process of payment to the contractor. So we, we kind of have, we have a, I want to say we have a two-week period after they submit their drought request on the 14th to pay the contractor the money that they're requesting.
That's in the contract.
Yeah, I believe it is. Yeah, I believe so, if my memory serves correctly. So what we're kind, what we're trying to do is just, you know, be responsible, because we have a responsibility to pay them in a timely fashion, even with all the things, all the hoops that we have to jump through with the USDA and the engineer's approval and auditor's approval and all those things. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know, the 5,000, I don't know where that number came from.
That's what my question is.
I think.
Yeah, it was set, who knows how long back, been that way ever since I got here.
Yeah, same. Yeah, and, and.
It's never accounted for inflation or anything.
And that's a very low number. That's, and that's essentially requiring that we get more approval for just about every change order. It's such a small number that it's very easy to surpass that. I mean, it's almost impossible to come in below it.
And if that's the case, then I think the county has an obligation to review the full process, not a case by case, because if it needs to be shifted, it should be shifted. And then you can have a carve-out for situations like this. I'm just not confident, for me, that that's enough to change, to do a one-off. Because that's kind of how we do a lot of things, it's just one-offs every time, instead of saying, when we're in a project phase that's funded by a grant, this is where we're going to change the authority to, to keep it moving forward. Like that's, we would, we would create a process so that your issue didn't have to come before every single time it happened. And when we do it this way, we're denying ourselves the ability to make Bonner County business run more efficiently. Because my question to Bill is, given what you said, which is completely reasonable, should we change our process so that it lifts it up once that grant approval is in place so that we can reasonably audit and track what we're doing, not as the county, but also public? Because when we have another project that comes up, it gives that clear definition of what we're doing. But it's bigger than what you're asking for. I just think we should review the whole process if, like you're saying, 5,000 isn't enough, period. So then it's not specific to this project. You have a problem with the 5,000 regardless in your particular job function.
And we, and we can certainly do that on project, the project, you know? In other words, this one pertains strictly to this project. So it's something that we can do or not do.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to make sense to me that for the purpose of a project that we're spending, I believe this is billions of dollars on, being as efficient with this project as possible, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution Twenty-three dash fifty-one stating that Solid Waste may pre-obligate the county at or below $20,000 for the Colburn Improvements Projects so long as they have budget authority.
I'll second the motion to advance it.
Okay, Dave Bowman, you've had your hand up for a little bit?
Yes, sir, Dave Bowman, for the record. So I've spent most of my life in, because there's something to see, I usually, you can't, it's not like road and bridge where equipment breaks down, they need to get.
You're breaking up really bad.
Change order. Well, I'm sorry, it's the best I can do.
That's a little better.
Change order, okay, well, it's just, it's the old Sally Valley internet. A change order means that apparently that there was an oversight somewhere, either in the design or in how something was built and then it gets discovered and, well, we have to make this change in order to, because something got overlooked somewhere or a situation arose that nobody could predict or failed to predict.
Yeah, it could be all the above.
Yeah, so I can, so what we're seeing right now is we do have a change order, two change orders in process for this project right now. One of them was for, we excavated the area for a. One of them was for, we excavated the area for a schedule E for a metal pile. And when we did that, we found a lot of, um, wood waste debris and ash that was about 18 inches below the ground surface. Which no one knew about the, um, we, we didn't do a geotechnical investigation that spot because it was just a asphalt pad, but the site operations manager wasn't aware of it. No one in Solid Waste was aware of it. It had been used to burn wood waste in the past and someone had covered it up and began to use it for a gravel pad, a tire bunker. Um, so when we got down there, when we excavated all the material out, we found kind of a surprise, a nice surprise for us. And, uh, we had to remove that because it was organic material that was going to rot and cause damage to the finished product. So it was one of those things where we got in, no one knew it was there. We got in, we found it. We had to remove it or, I mean, there was just no other alternative. So.
What was the cost associated with that Spencer? Do you know?
Yeah, uh, I believe it was $22,000. It was a day and a half's worth of work for the contractor. It was about 38 loads of ash and wood, dump truck loads.
Wow.
I, that's a lot.
That's significant.
But I also think that there's more than just the business function that we gain when it comes into the public. It is, this project, like you just described, gives us something to consider when we hit the next kind of a project that we want to get involved in. And when we start looking at only, it makes it easier, we, we tend to close doors of that transparency. Because that gives you the opportunity to be able to say, oh, I should, I, this is an easy root cause to see why did it go above? What happened? And it's other people in other areas of county business could use that type of information to help. It's not just about streamlining, but streamlining is important. I just don't want to close it to say I could get the bill paid faster because my question is, are we paying the bill late? Where if we're not paying the bill late and we have the ability to as a community have discussions on what we're working on before we process payments that exceed a set amount that for some reason Bonner County has agreed to not just set, but they've actually never changed it. We should understand why before we change it, in my opinion, for this project. But I a hundred percent understand what you're saying. I just think we should look at why we're doing this to begin with. If everybody who says, well, if we're well above 5,000, then we need to review our process, not go case by case.
I think, um, I think a way, a lot of the projects that I've done for the county in the past are very short in nature. So a month or two maybe, and they're not as, so you might have a pay change order in one, a project like that. Where this project in particular, it's going to be a year long or more. It, it would be pretty easy, I think, to kind of do like of some kind of financial tracking, like with auditors or something, or develop some kind of, I don't know, spreadsheet of expenses that, that folks could look at and say, here's what we're doing. Here's what we're spending. Here's what we have kind of thing. I mean, I don't want to give out too much detail about how much money we have to spend. You know, because then, you know, obviously your contractor is going to bill you magically bill you for that amount. Right? So, but I think there's a way to, to, to revise the policy as a whole. To kind of monitor those expenses on a project basis so that you can say, hey, look, these guys are being fiscally conservative and responsible with their money. Here's the money they have. And here's what they're spending and here's what this change order does. And I think there's a way to do that. That would be, that would be transparent and reasonable.
Okay. Thank you for answering promptly.
Thank you.
Uh, Brandon, somebody?
Yeah, Brandon Kramer for the record. I am a bit perplexed as to how this is actually going to streamline anything, given the fact that the grant has to be, like the, the costs have to go through the grant process first and be approved there. And further, in almost every contract, there is special provisions for how change orders are expected to be handled from a cost perspective and what the net payments terms are for change orders. And that should have been caught as either part of the contract negotiations or should be reviewed now to ensure that those change orders are in fact held to the same 14th pay period that you referenced earlier on in the discussion.
So, you know, the, the con, the contract that we used is the EJ CDC. It's a very standard, kind of industry standard contract. And it is, and it, and we're obligated to use that, that contract by the USDA. And so everything that you're talking about is defined in there. What this is doing for, for us is it's streamlining the county process by allowing, uh, Solid Waste to approve, uh, smaller change orders. And so we can, we, once we receive the change order, we can sign it, send it to the USDA for approval, which is, which is what we do anyway. It just shortens the time that we have to wait to get that change order in front of the BOCC. So it's, it's just streamlining things a little bit on our end that will help us, uh, be more efficient.
All right. Mr. Bowman, you had something else?
There shouldn't be an inordinate number of change orders to begin with in private. Obviously.
Dave, we're getting about one third of every fifth syllable.
Was your summary?
Breaking up really bad.
Was your summary just do it in front of the public and it shouldn't happen often? Because I thought I caught that over, and he's gone. All right.
Yeah. Mr. Rose, did you have something?
Hey, you please. So when you're building a house and you sign a change order, that comes with liability attached to it. And, um, in this case, we're asking the director of Solid Waste to sign off on that change order, which means the liability has now been accepted by the county. I don't know whether, whether commissioners would like to weigh in on that. But, um, I would think you would. And, um, I would ask the question, uh, Great West, I, I also had a geotechnic report as well in my building process. And if Geo, Geotech wasn't consulted, is Great West engineering partly responsible for that oversight? And therefore the county shouldn't, how do we say, just jump into accepting that liability? Is it partly theirs?
Nah, I don't think that particular piece of dirt was brought up to them.
Yeah, but if you're the engineer of the project and you overlook the geotechnical, even building a house, my engineer wouldn't do it without getting the geotechnical report. And therefore, um, if you don't do it, then there's a liability as the engineer of the project that you're responsible for. And that goes back to the oversight portion of whether we discuss it or you discuss it. Your three minds are pretty, pretty, how do we say knowledgeable enough to figure this out? But if Bob Howard just signs the paper, then the liability is transferred. And you didn't get a chance to, how do we say, look at all the different avenues. And so there's an oversight issue that should be applied to it as well. Not to mention the fact that this thing started several years ago with a much larger promise than what we're getting. And now we're getting change orders and cost increases and everything else. I said a couple of weeks, a month ago that this should all be exposed and get it off your shoulders because it was the previous board's decision and it was an inaction involved in it that kind of delayed. And so without belaboring the point, I think your oversight should be welcomed.
Thank you. Ben?
If the, Spencer Hutchings, if the contract was written in such a way that the county ends up paying for everything that's discovered and found as construction is proceeding, then I would, uh, think that the contract maybe wasn't written very well. You know, I, I've been in large construction projects where unknown things popped up. You know, we had a place where, uh, we had, uh, peat moss that just wouldn't stop growing. Every day we'd dig it out and every day it'd come right back to the same level. Did that for about a month. So these kind of things happen, but it's, if the contract's written properly, that's something the contractor has to cover, not necessarily the citizens of Bonner County have to cover. So I would think that maybe we need to look at how the contract was executed and how it was written and if it was reviewed properly. Because we shouldn't be on the hook for every single little thing that's found.
Thank you.
Well, then too, that sometimes it can be when you're getting federal funds, you think, I'm not paying for it. I can afford it. But my other thing is in risk management, you have stops for a reason. You don't remove the stop because you had to stop. You have to do that evaluation. And, and so for me, I, I would like to do the evaluation of why this is coming up. Because it can't be just continue a one-off. We need to review the process as a whole, not piecemeal it. So.
I call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we want to amend the motion to maybe verbal approval ratified in following meeting?
No, I want to actually see, do we need to change a process or is there some, what is it that we're missing for me? I want to see what we're missing. Something is being missed.
Well, this one is, is site specific. It doesn't give them a free $20,000 expenditure wherever and whenever. It strictly has to do with that particular spot, which is, it's not a unique case.
But don't you think we have a responsibility, even if we get a grant, that before we say to taxpayers, we, we're going to put it on your dime, like if it is a case where someone, you know, a contractor had an oversight on something, that we're actually reviewing that, not just saying we have enough to cover the expense.
Well, first of all, it's not a grant. It's a USDA loan. But, uh, you know.
To me, thank you for the clarification. And that means we have to do it even.
Even more.
High. Yes. It increases the significance of that. So.
Mr. Chairman, there is a lot of oversight that is accompanied with this. We have internal controls. And I remain committed to getting this project done.
Project's not at failure for not following, um, best practices of auditing. And so there isn't a delay. Um, and both actually individuals that spoke, uh, on this memo agreed that like a phone call wouldn't even, uh, delay it. So it's not, it comes back to the, do you push something through or do we do our due diligence? Because if it, this is a problem and Spencer says it's beyond just this, in general, 5,000 isn't enough where you're hitting that. So we should review the whole process and upgrade the whole process for consistency. And that actually is important to auditing.
I agree that we might need to look at this entire process. However, today, this agenda item which was put on here by Director Howard is in reference to a project that is going on right now. We are in full compliance with all reporting. We are complying with every bit of auditing. So, but I'd be happy to amend the motion to include a verbal for, but I do think it's important that we do this so that we can get this project done on time.
The project is not at threat and a change in spending authority is what's being requested. And it's for an occasional, it's not even, they don't have, it's not something that happens today that says we can't actually do something right the first time. It's, it's an occasional thing that is going to come up on this project. It's right for them to bring it forward and it's our obligation to make sure we're doing a process that the community can depend on as we go from project to project. He's not looking at you. Sherry's hands.
Sure.
Yeah, um, I, I'm going back to the $5,000 limit that was set, uh, prior. It was, there were reasons and, and you may want to review those reasons. This is the first time somebody's asking for that to be extended, even if it's just for a project. Doesn't that sent, set a very dangerous precedent? Because it will kind of send a message to other departments that it's actually acceptable.
It wouldn't set precedence because it's, uh, it's project specific. It's a, a one thing, item, not a across the board, every department does it. We did it for Roden Bridge simply because not much they can do for under $5,000. But unfortunately, but yeah, I'm, uh, I totally agree with what Ms. Williams is saying. And it's, and it's something we could put on the agenda to look at it for certain, certain departments and certain items. That it may be comparing when that 5,000 was set and how inflation has hit it. But, uh, because of this site, I don't see a problem with it, but I see both sides of the, the equation. Mr. Kramer?
Uh, Rick Kramer for the record. So a little clarification. Is there, is there a change order currently on the table for $20,000? Is that what we're talking about?
No.
Then what is the urgency to push this forward now? Let's sign this, give them the authority to make $20,000 change orders. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about $20,000 change orders. And Luke, you act like it's, like it's nothing, but it's my money you're spending freely. You have no reservation about, you know, making, doing things that cost taxpayers a tremendous amount of money. And if, if my understanding is correct, there's not a $20,000 change order on the table. This is just, I'd like to have this. And before you give it to them, Azza, I appreciate your wanting to review the process. Thank you for trying to protect us. Thank you.
We did this for Road, Sherry, I want to correct. Roden Bridge actually came with an issue, but it was reviewed and it went through legal as to why their department should change from $5,000. And I made process. We need to have a process by which this comes forward. I think this is valid. I think it needs to come forward to review our process and then come before the board if a change is needed. So I understand that Commissioner Amit wants to make a decision. I am for tabling this issue, but if you want to move forward, then you, you guys have to call for your motion.
I called the question.
You read the motion, didn't you?
Yes, I did. It was seconded for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, and you seconded it with discussion. So roll call out.
Commissioner Amit?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
I'm going to say no at this time because additional information is needed, even though it's project specific to raise from 5,000 to a $20,000 spending cap.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to say no at this time for similar reasons. And, uh, I think we will look at a, a verbal with a ratification ASAP type of situation. Which brings us up to those sudden next day meetings. That, that's where we'll go with it. Okay, that's it. For those guys. And Commissioner Amit has something on there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week we had a vigorous discussion in regards to Idaho Capital Project Funds Broadband Infrastructure Grant Applications. And before us, I have a letter of support from one of the individuals who was on that meeting. And that is for Konixu LLC. With that, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve four letters of support for the grant application to expand broadband access to Odin, Priest Lake, Sagel and Selly in Bonner County from Konixu LLC.
I'll second the motion to advance it for discussion. So for me, my issue is the same and I'm going to be consistent with the process. County government should not, um, be favoring in particular businesses. I was willing and there was support from the person who brought the issue up just to have Bonner County write a letter stating that as a county, we encourage the expansion of broadband within the county, but not be company specific. Because that's choosing winners and losers. I do understand that since the vote went two to one to write letters, that now everybody has to write a letter, get a letter from us because they need to actually be on the same playing field now. But I will still, I understand and agree that they need to ask, but I will still be voting no because government is not here to deal with private industry. And even with, um, Konixu, Mr. Green was present online and gave the same argument. As a business, his job is to elevate his business to receive the grants. So I won't support it because that is not the function of government to write letters of support to elevate local businesses, um, for grant money.
Roll call, Luke? No, Spencer, go ahead.
Uh, Spencer Hutchings. And I see Konixu is here. Is that, is that you? Okay. Yeah. And, you know, I'm all for, like I said last week, I'm all for doing this broadband expansion. But I am completely against you guys giving out specific letters to specific companies and, you know, endorsing them. There's no reason for it. There's absolutely no reason for it. I mean, you get the same effect by writing a letter saying the, the county wants to expand broadband and, you know, I'd really like to know why you insist on naming a name.
Broadband is part of infrastructure. Infrastructure is part of our wheelhouse. And if we was to say no to him, then do we retract the other ones that in the past 20 years that have got letters to support?
No.
And then suffer a discrimination lawsuit? It's strictly a letter saying that, yeah, we're all for infrastructure increase.
All right, and I understand that. And just because we've done something in the past doesn't mean it's correct to continue doing it in the future. You know, anytime the county, the city, the state endorses a particular corporate, entity, any entity over another entity, you're picking winners and losers, and that's not your job. Your job is to create a level playing field, and you think that you're creating a level playing field by giving letters to anybody who asks you for one, when in reality, what you're doing is giving a letter to anybody who kisses your ring. I mean, that's basically the equivalent. When you ask them to come to the, to the board and request a letter, you're saying, if you kiss my ring, I'll give you a letter. They shouldn't have to ask that. The letter should be completely generic and broad and cover the project, not the companies in specific.
Thank you. Brent Baker from the Ponderay Economic Partnership. Again, we, as an organization, would support this letter for the same reasons we did last week with the others. Not to favor any one company over another. Any company that wants to apply certainly can. And the idea of this is not to support the award of an application, but to support the application itself. The broad, we're not qualified, none of us, the commissioner is, me, nobody here in this room, is qualified to make the choice. How those grant, those millions of dollars of grant monies will be spent, that's up to the broadband commission, and they have the expertise to do so. So all we're doing is advancing an established business. They've been in business for five years in the community, have proven themselves providing service in certain communities. That's all we know. So we're supporting the application, not the award. There's a difference. And also to address one issue from last week, the Commissioner Williams brought up was a good one. Who's to say, well, they expanded, you mentioned something about a expansion of internet into your community where you live, and that there's some disappointment about the quality of the service, et cetera. What's different about this infrastructure expansion is that there are very strict definitions of the quality and level of service that will be received. It has to provide a certain level of speed and quality to qualify for the grant. So that's kind of handled in the, in the grant itself. So again, we're supporting the application, not the decision. We just want to make sure they understand, as a county, yes, as a community, we would support expansion of this infrastructure, and that's the importance of the letter. I agree, it would have been okay last time. We would have, we don't think it's the strongest choice, but it would have been an okay choice to give a general letter saying for any of the companies applying. I would have been personally okay with that, but it is slightly stronger in terms of how those grants get processed by naming the individuals as established companies in our community. It helps their process.
I'm going to put you on the spot, too.
It's a perfectly valid concern.
In economic development, branding matters, right? So we have a brand, and we know this is a brand I can trust. So that's why you'll have a company like Verizon who says, I'm going to make a subpar internet, but I don't want that name to be associated with my brand of Verizon. So as a county, Bonner County is a brand. And so we're not doing, we are affixing the brand of the county to a specific letter. And I, I will say, I disagree with some people's views on why you come from a district. You're supposed to understand what the people in your area want. And so one of the big things in my area is, they want to know more about the companies that we do business with. They want to know where they spend their money. They want to know if they're into certain, whether, doesn't matter what part of the coin you're on, they have a desire to know about more of the businesses. That's not my job as a county commissioner to say, do you guys support this agenda or that's agenda as a company? That's not my job. That's why we should stay out of the business of attaching it to a name. But, and my argument is the same, that if we wrote a generic letter, and it was online, everybody could print it off, what it did was it actually increased the footprint of the people that would apply that didn't know that we're writing letters to support an application, and would actually further the stated goal of getting companies to want to expand broadband into Bonner County. But when you go letter by letter, and I will point out, since he decided to come, Conixu didn't ask us for a letter. They said, why are you doing that? This is private industry. And so, but because we made a decision to put our foot in private industry, he has to come and ask us. And that's getting involved in winners and losers in private industry versus saying, anybody willing to drop line that can meet that grant application and get the tax money that the state has taken from us, come and get it, we'll make sure you know Bonner County wants it. That's not what we did, and that's why he has to ask us for the letter, because we got involved in private industry elevation instead of taking a seat back. That's my problem with it, because it's not the process of government.
Yes, well, for this round, I think it's already underway, and it would be unfair to deny it at this point.
Absolutely.
But I think it's absolutely worth continuing the discussion for, in the future. I don't think whether Bonner County puts out fairly for all a generic letter of support to the process to any established business doing business in our state or county that wants to expand that, I would be okay with that from the economic development point of view. I think at this point, though, I would just reinforce, in this case, I think we have to continue down the road we started to be fair.
I agree that you have to continue to be fair since we started.
Sherry, you got your hand up?
Yes, I do. Steve, you made a comment earlier about, you know, just supporting the infrastructure, which is a generic statement, and I agree with that, and that's what we're talking about, is making a generic letter. The other factor y'all might want to think about is that doing these individual letters takes up a lot of county time, which is money. Time is money. And how much time are we spending discussing individual letters when a generic letter that is available to everybody would have already been dealt with and taken care of?
Now, and just to clear up any muddy water out there, we do not write the letter. We have them construct the letter, and then we read it and decide whether it's appropriate. And so our, our time in it is pretty short.
Well, not today, it's not.
Aside, public comment and discussions, yeah, sometimes that can get lengthy. Go ahead, Spence.
So Spencer Hutchings again, and just out of curiosity, have any of these companies that we're writing letters to donate to any of your campaigns?
Not that I know of.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
I can confidently say, I can confidently say no, we have not done.
Okay, and the second thing is, is, you know, all the economic development boards I've ever dealt with have been pretty, I don't know, left-leaning communist in nature, and I made some assumptions about this gentleman last week, and I'd like to apologize to him publicly that I incorrectly assumed your character, and I apologize for that.
And I apologize to you for getting angry.
No, no, no compliments ever. I apologize, I'm sorry about that, and we were both actually saying the same thing, it's just I didn't hear him for some reason. But I still think you guys should not be giving individual letters to anybody for anything.
Thank you. Mr. Arn?
If, Fred Arn for the record, if the county anoints by writing a letter of support, is the county potentially liable?
Not in this case, no.
Not in this case. So if they don't meet the standards, if we anoint them.
That, that'll be a financial liability on their side. Anybody else? Name for the record.
John Dupree for the record. Ronald Reagan said, government's not the solution, it's the problem. And as a private citizen, I really appreciate the fact that we live in Bonner County, North Idaho, because there's so many less regulations and government intrusion in our lives up here, as opposed to the place I came from, which I escaped from. So I love the fact that we have open dialogue. It's America, and that's great. But as just a private citizen, if we can keep government out of our pockets and regulating our lives all the time, I'd vote for that. Thank you.
Now, and just so everybody knows, if you get elected to a public office, you're not exempt to pay in your taxes, you're still a taxpayer, too. So we, we feel the same pain you do. We ready for a vote? You made the motion, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ahmet?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
I agree you should ask, but my answer's consistent, no.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
All right, the dreaded action number one item. So I'm going to clear up some misstatements that were made. I think it was stated that since the individual's name was brought out in this meeting, the individual does not make $17 an hour. The individual makes $29.15, which exceeds the actual expectation. Human Resources has an obligation every year that they go through and they review based on, we use AmeriVAN. And AmeriVAN is what we use to go through and check everybody's rates of pay. And at that time, you hear the individual director say, my guy needs more, we're too low, or people are quitting, we need to do something about that. That happens every single year in county government, just like in a business. Sometimes a business will say, you guys aren't getting anything. So we do have something called merit pay. Bonner County has actually not given merit pay for the last three years. It has a cap of $3,000. We have not given merit pay because we don't have the money to give merit pay, okay? So clarify, rate of pay is not $17 an hour. Rate of pay is above what is stated as reasonable in private sector. We exceed that. I don't think it was right to have brought the individual's name up, because that is not what I released. I said, should we be in the business at the time of separation of evaluating a person's work and determining as commissioners? And I want to be clear, as commissioners, because Human Resources did not bring this issue, as commissioners. And commissioners went to the supervisor of the individual on two, on an individual basis about paying money out. That is not a process within best practice of Human Resources. So I walked into an executive session where the discussion was very clearly $60,000 payment to the individual based on what the person's background is. Doesn't matter, because the individual, I don't want to pit, our community is very focused on veterans, and it's not right to act as if, if I say no, that I don't care about veterans, because that's not, that's not an accurate statement at all. We're not talking about the individual. We are talking about the process, not talking about the individual. And so we don't have a policy in place that says, post-separation, we evaluate work product. There isn't a process. This would be the first time. So I will use a better word instead of saying dishonest. I'll say, it was disingenuous to bring up an item where there was a negotiation to remove a risk to all of our county associated with a person that left the building. And so to be clear, in spite of what was stated, Asia did not say, oh, give that person two times their salary, never did. Risk mitigation means I need to go downward. And so I negotiated settlement in favor of the county. It was not a severance pay because you quit, you did a great job check. That's not what it was. And so to put the two together and to bring in veterans is not an accurate statement of what took place. The question is, I believe this person is worth more. I believe they've done a good job. I believe that that is not what my job is. That's not what Human Resources' job is. Those are the thinks and the feelings. They have to go off of the rubric, which they did every single year. That's what happened, and the question is valid. And so there was a dishonest statement made that there was no dollar amount discussed. There was an exact dollar amount. It was $60,000. I was very transparent in, this topic of compensation belongs in the public sphere by statute that we are supposed to follow. It is not an executive session item until you hit the name of the person that you want to talk. But once we're talking about how you separate from the county and what our process is, that's all up to you guys to hear, and it's your, your right to demand that you hear that conversation. Because how is it that we decide the dollar amount? I don't know how the dollar amount was stated. I walked into the meeting, because it wasn't noticed as, let's discuss compensation post-separation. It wasn't brought by Human Resources. This is not the regular and typical item. And so my position is that this is, we should follow best practices. We risk the county by making decisions like this, because if I watch that payment happen and I work for the county, I'm going to knock on the door and say, where did you evaluate my work product? I would like to be in line to see if I can get a check from the county. This is not my family's business. This is not my money to dispose of how I want to. And when we get into, these are elected officials, there is a reasonable concern of why, how are we picking and choosing who we're going to do this for? That's not our job, and it is not a slam on an individual, because individual's name should have never come up. My question was, should we evaluate you when you leave and give you money? That's it. We didn't budget for this, and if Bradshaw wants to give him $10,000, that's great, but that's not what I'm here, I'm here to make sure I do my job to pay attention to fiscal responsibility for Bonner County. And I encourage the idea of doing process and procedure that you guys can depend on so that you know what we're doing. That is not what happened. And Legal very clearly told both commissioners that I was, that I was absolutely within my right as a commissioner to, I not only said it in the meeting, but to tell the public this is up for discussion, because clearly, based on the presence and the emails, you guys have an opinion on whether or not we give out this kind of money. We do not have a Friends of the Commissioner fund. It's not a statutory fund. What fund are we going to call this? I don't know. So that's my comment. And so I talked with Legal on this issue, and I will, Legal, not, Legal was present during this discussion. Legal doesn't advise doing a memo. They advise a discussion and that when and if this comes up for a payment, that then there's an actual decision-making. But they said it's right to have the discussion in public, because that item should have been a public discussion. So Legal was not in favor of such of a payment. That's all I have to say about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's much of what Commissioner Williams says that I can agree with. However, having a personnel discussion in executive session is perfectly appropriate, is compliant with state code. It is the reason why we have executive sessions, is to deal with individuals. I look forward to having the conversation that is agendized, and it is a conversation as with last week. I am unaware if there will be a vote or a motion or not. I think it's good that we have some other elected officials back so we can get some more clarification. But in regards to the severance check and especially executive session, it is interesting to me, as someone who did not vote in favor of that settlement, and remain opposed to that, but I am choosing to keep that and the privacy of executive session honored. So I'll look forward to that when we get there.
I will point out that that topic actually did belong in executive session. The topic that is on this agenda right now is whether or not Bonner County Commissioners should evaluate someone's work product. That is a topic, and it's compensation. And there's a lot of talking around the rule. You were emailed the direct rule from Legal that said, compensation as a topic belongs in the public sphere. Now, you agreed that you just abstained from something that was deemed a settlement. That does belong in executive session, because it does hit that statute. So the way in which we can help everybody is stop putting vague statements on the agenda so that we know what we're going to talk about, because I'm going to be surprised, veterans is very generic. That doesn't, just talking about veterans doesn't make it executive session. It needs to hit one of the areas that require us to secret it away. Otherwise, just talking about veterans goes in the public sphere. Just public sphere of personnel doesn't make you go into executive session. It is a misuse, and it is exactly the way Commissioner Bradshaw described it. It's used as an opportunity for elected officials to have a running commentary, and that is not what the statute tells us we're supposed to use it for. We should have this dialogue, as painful as it is, in front of everybody. That's how they know that we are not involved in illegal meeting setting or open meeting violation, because it's new. You don't walk into it knowing that we're going to go straight to a vote and that you needed a second before the rest of us knew, because it gives the impression that this was a setup. So when in doubt, per our AG, it goes in open session. So any comment from the community, if you want, because it's not a decision, it's a discussion.
Dan Rose for the record. Again, I've commented many times about executive session and its misuse, and I agree 100% with what you're saying, Commissioner Williams. I'm looking at veterans right now in executive session today, and I, again, have no idea what that, what that means. Are we going to discuss the hiring entry rate for the new veteran service officer? Are we going to discuss how much money is actually paid? and I again have no idea what that, what that means. Are we going to discuss the hiring entry rate for the new veteran service officer? Are we going to discuss how much money is actually paid by federal monies for that position, if any? I don't know what, what that means. And so that opens up a whole range of wild ideas. I can just tell you from an agenda that you had weeks ago, Veterans was on there and it didn't take me long to figure out what was going on. I didn't have to get it from any one of the three of you. I didn't think the secretary was getting reimbursed extra pay for her services here. So, with only two people in the, in the office, it was pretty clear to figure out who it was. You've made some Facebook, Mr. Chairman made some Facebook comments from a person.
I have never made a Facebook comment.
Okay, social media.
In the history of my life. So, fire it will if you want to.
If it's social media or media.
Go ahead.
Social media or.
Urge yourself, Mr. Rose.
No, I'm not perjuring, I'm not perjuring. I saw the email and I'm not mentioning names. Or if it was an email, I'd correct and say not social media. But I gave that name to the person. And it was pretty easy for me to figure out, okay? So.
It was a toughie being its one employee in that department.
There's two, two. There's a secretary that works there as well.
Well, to be clear, I never said veterans either. I just said fake. So you jumped the gun and disclosed.
So, i- i- in that sense, you know, I, again, I don't know what this, this one is about. I can tell you, you know, I wouldn't be quick to jump the accusatory gun on how things get figured out. A lot of smart people are paying attention, well beyond me. But the big problem I have with this is the analysis that this is a precedent-setting conception. And who is the next person to receive any type of amount of money upon retirement to keep their lips sealed about the county's secreted business? Because if they know something and they don't want, they know you don't want it said, all they say is, "I want the same deal that the VSO got." You've opened up that door. And, and so when we talk about a contract and I asked about a contract and about a pending lawsuit.
Mr. Chairman, could we stick to the agenda item?
Well, it is. It's part of the severance check. And so if there is an actual pending litigation that, that, that the VSO might have brought, that would be one thing. I would assume that what he was hired on and all the yearly assessments, it wasn't brought up. There really wasn't a problem. I don't think you win that one in court if you hadn't made the claim a lot sooner than the day you're going out the door. And so, I don't, I, I can't see that piece of information. You might have, that might be, how do we say, executive session material. But you made some type of, how do we say, description of it after I had my public comment. And it didn't really sound like there's an actual contract that, that he could stand his ground on in a, in a court.
This is not the request of the individual. The individual, and so it's, this individual's name is being put out at the beginning of this meeting. They didn't ask for anything.
They never complained, never asked for anything.
The name shouldn't have been disclosed by Commissioner Bradshaw.
And, and so, well, we could have already figured that one out. But that, that goes to the point that it's creating, how do we say, a precedent for someone else to use against you at any time they want. And secondly, if it's, if it wasn't their initiation, then it was not yours. It was the initiation right here. And that implies a pastor-to-pastor relationship and a military-to-military relationship. And understandably, your beliefs on either one of those can be very high. And it can be perceived from others watching that those relationships might be behind the initiation.
It could be perceived that I have beautiful hair, but everybody's pretty much sure that that didn't happen. You know, so each person gets to perceive what they wish. And to clarify things, this came up when we found out the person was going to retire. And that came to the surface and it's like, well, that seems like an injustice. So we're talking about a, an employee, a rate of pay. It is a hundred percent appropriate to discuss it in an executive session. In the executive session, we discussed, this is what happened. Is it appropriate or should we compensate this person in some way? And if we did, what would it look like? Ten thousand dollars a year salary, sixty thousand dollars, what? Nobody ever defined, this is what we want to give him. How would this look if we went through with it? And how would we fund it? And in the same meeting, we all three unanimously agreed to pay a severance out-the-door package for another employee. And Commissioner Williams was very adamant that that amount be held confidential. Unfortunately, in government, it's public funds and that cannot be held confidential as in private sector. Whether it be litigation or whatever. Would you like to tell them what that amount that you agreed and negotiated for was?
So, Commissioner.
Does it's public record?
Commissioner Bradshaw, so you take a lot of liberty to intentionally misstate things.
I didn't mistake anything in that statement.
Actually, I, so, I'll, I'll give a disclaimer. I know I saw Bill in the hallway. Bill has asked that I refrain from responding to the lies that you told that are actually on record of one of these people online. Because you, for some reason, forget, forgot that that person said they were recording you. You are, you are intentionally lying to the public. And I don't agree that you have the right to disclose a settlement to the public. If Bill Wilson wants to step in and say that, I can clearly state that. But you were explained that when you're in the, in, when you're in the mode of trying to mitigate a risk from the county, you don't start talking about your settlement negotiations with that person, especially before the ink is dried on the pen. But you went and spoke to somebody wherein you said falsehoods on tape. And I am aware of it. And I said, "What do I do?" Bill Wilson said, "Asia, you have the right to defend yourself, but I'm not going to do that at the expense of the person. And so I will tell you all. I have mitigated risks associated with litigation downwards since I've been here. I have never walked in and I will tell you in this particular setting, people were like, "This is what the person wants." And I said, "No, I have never given someone what they want. This is what I recommend." And the per, and we mitigated a risk based on my risk assessment. That's a good thing. So to sit here and act like I'm trying to give out money and just say, "Don't tell the public that I did it," that's not what happened. Because just like I did last week with Human Resources, I'm actually called on to do it again because external people don't want to work with you. And so I will sit in again on a mediation of a file against the county to mitigate the risk to the people. It always ends up in a dollar amount. But I can definitely tell you the dollar amount that I saved by my mitigation, which is what he won't do. This is not an appeal to a motion. First off, he started by telling you the dollar amount was seventeen. It's twenty-nine, which exceeded the expectation. We don't do ma, we have not done merit.
I never said seventeen, somebody else did.
No, you did.
Well, that's what somebody told me it was.
The beauty of record.
You said it.
You just said you didn't say it. Now you're saying liar, liar.
Well, if I said it, I stand corrected.
So, it was stated. And I'm just, the name of the individual in the department didn't come from Asia. The concept which belongs in public. Commissioner, I don't have time to run back the tape. I'm going to state it and then we can move on. I released the concept of at the time of separation that the Board of Commissioners.
And you never mentioned a name.
I didn't mention a name, but actually, I never mentioned a name.
I said that. You never mentioned a name.
It was you who disclosed what belonged in executive session. And that's the problem, is a misunderstanding of what executive session is. What you disclosed belonged there. What I disclosed did not. And thank you for agreeing to that. That's the problem.
And at the start of this meeting, I even complimented you.
No, you didn't. You tried to backhand slap somebody with it.
We agreed on a settlement for somebody and Commissioner Williams did an excellent job negotiating that.
Bradshaw, the issue at hand.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing right now other than we're making some really good YouTube, which sometimes we hear about.
Well, the screens are off, so are you guys still having this now? We should be charging admission.
The, the, the concept of trying to tie a mitigation of litigation to a separation should doesn't belong in the same category and it's not on the agenda. The question that I asked did not release, and the statement that I made did not release the name or the department. It was the idea of commissioners. We have a Human Resources Department. We have a budget process. There's a process by which we evaluate what people are paid during the year. Happened every single year, increases occurred. My question is valid to the public. Do we write a check and a dollar amount was given by Commissioner Ahmet of sixty thousand dollars? That was a dollar amount given. And my face hit the floor. And I said, "This is not an executive session topic." The way it goes is, all this discussion that we're having now, we talk about now. Then when they know who they want to talk about, we go, "Executive session, I want to talk about this individual." And then we go into it for the individual. And then we come out of executive session and we make a decision. That's how it's supposed to go. The littlest amount of information stays in executive session. That's how it's supposed to go. This one didn't go that way. And we see it every single week because these generic executive session, Human Resources topics, recreation, what are we talking about? Are we talking about the height of the lake? I have no idea what it is. And the only way that I can do my job to represent the people is to say, "I'm throwing a flag on play, this is not an executive session" and bring it to your attention for you to do your job to hold us accountable because the boss of a commissioner is all of you. So whether you like the topic or not, whether you agree with my position on it or not, that's my job and I did it. And it's the right thing to do. And it's not based on think, thoughts and feelings. We don't have the ability to keep doing this rate of secret meeting stuff. So, that's my position on it.
The screens are off, why are we off?
They're, they're fixing it right now, technology's working on it. I'm, I'm not sure.
Pretty convenient.
So, and I would like to add, the Commissioner Williams has done very well at negotiating things down. In that case, we all agreed and probably saved sixty thousand if you figured the other parts of it. And, but at the end of the day, we all, we all three agreed on an amount to pay an exiting employee, which was appropriate. And it's done unfortunately sometimes. if you're going to put out a story, put out the whole damn story. Don't just throw bits and pieces out there so that you can get you people aroused and say that these two are doing something or us two are doing something or somebody else are doing something. Manipulation is actually a form of witchcraft. And it truly is. It truly is. And putting out a, putting out a partial story is a lie. It's the same as a lie. But y'all have to try the words you hear. And then let your eyes see what the actual facts are and then go from there. Everything I do, I do with the county as the best interest, as what I think is right for the county. The other day, we had a planning hearing. I voted some way. These two voted another way. Did I throw a fit? Did I go out and stir you all up? No. It was two to one vote. It passed. Now I fully support the decision of the board. That does not happen all very regularly, does it? No. But that's the way it should happen. Once the vote is made, we should all support that decision.
So on, before we go public comment, so you keep saying that what I said was inaccurate. And so what I asked was, should.
The half truth is not accurate.
Well, there is no half on my truth. Should the Board of County Commissioners evaluate an employee's historical performance at the time of retirement and determine whether or not the individual should receive up to a year's worth of salary for a job well done upon separation? There is no untruth, that is a question. And so there are people that have said, "Oh, Asia made that up, there's no way." And I said, "Yeah, it's not a joke. It's a question that needed to be answered." I didn't actually mention, and I intentionally don't mention either of you in anything that I say. And this is actually the first time I sent something to be commented on because of the direction that it was going. So I didn't mention you, I didn't mention the employee, I didn't mention the area. I mentioned the idea. And so stop saying it's untrue because you're the one who's untrue.
Ms., go ahead.
Brent Baker again, speaking individually this time. I have a lot of experience with public meeting laws and with executive sessions, having served on multiple boards and organizations, including chairman of the Bonner County School District. And for three years, we had continuous executive sessions, always with attorney present and a top-notch attorney. And the issue here is that it's not like somebody's right and somebody's wrong here. You're all right in parts of everything. It's, it's this and that, not this or that. It's a common thing. And it's very important, actually, that a lot of things have to occur in executive session. And anytime you're talking about an interview of an individual or any negotiation in relation to an individual, that has to be in executive session. But yes, once a decision is made and public funds are being expended at an agreed-upon contract, now it becomes public. And that has to be approved. The final approval is in public and the record. And everybody knows what the dollar amount is. But the process has to occur in executive session. And yes, it's true that the most unpleasant thing you will do the entire time your commissioner is coming up. And that is revising policies and procedures. And the worst of all of that is for Human Resources. It's a huge job. It's never fun, but it's exactly what has to happen. So, I don't know any of the details of, of the existing case you're talking about, but it's obviously a hot button. But really, the solution going forward is in fact bringing the policy and procedure portion of it to the forefront and getting that established for the future. And it's a lot of work. It won't happen overnight. It's going to take, you know, the better part of a year. Usually takes professional help to have a consultant come in and help get it brought up to snuff. Either that or it's going to be even more painful and take even longer. But it's a big job. It has to be based on that. So yes, Commissioner Williams is correct, in my opinion, in saying that this needs to be brought out in the public as a matter of policy. So, going forward, you know exactly when you're, when you're moving into executive session and why. And you know exactly what has to be outside and why. And it's guided by, not by opinions or political position or anything else, but by the policies and procedures that have been discussed in public that are then formally adopted. And it's a big job. That's all I can say.
And the way policy gets changed is something comes up that's not in policy.
Right, and then you know it's time.
Now we need to build some type of structure and process for that.
Exactly. Good luck.
Yeah. Which sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. Ms. Dodd, you've had your hand up for a while. We'll get you right after her, Ms. Kramer.
You want me to go first or you want Ms. Kramer to go first?
Well, you have, you've had your hand up for quite some time.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say that I think there needs to be a documented process and a standard to go on. I'm not comfortable with the commissioners deciding willy-nilly to pay a severance or departing bonus or whatever you want to call it.
And that's why we had the conversation.
Putting employees arbitrarily. And there needs to be a specific documented reasons that would justify this type of discussion. If this employee never brought anything up with you, why would you initiate this? It, it does more than just insinuate favoritism when you arbitrarily choose to throw money at an exiting employee. The taxpayers need to know that there is a formula or a process or guideline that dictates this type of action. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kramer.
You can do Brandon here and stand up before I came up.
Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, Brandon Kramer for the record. I want to make sure because during the previous discussion, there was statements about settlements and then there are statements about severance. And I want to make sure that those two things are not conflated with one another. Because settlements indicate that there is a pending litigation. It is active in process. And there is something there that we are mitigating risk as a result. Severance is something that we would do in the event of a, of a surplus or a layoff. Not because someone is retiring. And there are very clear guidelines in the HR policies document that was actually approved by this board in March of this year, talking about retirement and bonus payments. And bonus payments happening on an annual basis up to one per year. In no, in no certain terms does it talk about an extra severance or an extra payment. And so I would like the board to clarify the difference between the settlement for the previous individual and the severance that is being discussed for this individual. And I don't have any idea who these people are or their background. So the, the individuals make absolutely no difference to me. Exactly to Asia's point, this is about policy and process at this point. policy and process at this point. So please elaborate on the difference between the settlement and the severance.
Well, I don't know that you could call it a settlement because no litigation was filed, but the risk and the possibility was there. And so because of the risk and the probability of it, it was addressed. And so that's how that went.
So I'll say it a little different, Brandon. Under the advisement of legal and with legal present, there was an employee number one issue was addressed appropriately per, and it followed human resources policies and procedures and what you would deem best practices for risk mitigation. The concept of the severance pay is initiated in this particular case by two commissioners who identified from their perspective that a person should have been paid more than what they were paid and wanted a payment made for that person. This wasn't brought forth by human resources. It didn't come up on a review. It didn't come up during a budget discussion. It was brought forth by the commissioners to discuss the payment. And the dollar amount stated was $60,000. And I stated at the beginning that this idea doesn't fit with our policy and procedure. We have only one option of a merit increase, which we haven't done in three years because of budgeting issues. This wasn't brought forth, not just by the individual, but it wasn't brought forth by their manager either. This was the two commissioners brought it forth.
Well, I would just like to say that Commissioner Omat and Commissioner Bradshaw routinely talk about how much they care about the budget and then routinely make decisions or suggestions that defy their previous statements.
Jennifer Kramer for the record. As I understand it, Asia stated that this topic is about, should we, the county or the commissioners, evaluate historical performance at the time of an employee leaving? My opinion is no, absolutely not. In any form or fashion, that's never not heard of in the private sector and it certainly shouldn't be in the government sector where your money, the money that you spend is our And I totally agree with all the comments about policy. We need a policy and we need a policy fast that states we will not evaluate your performance when you leave to give you additional money because it sounds like that's becoming or could become an issue. If we haven't given merit increases in, I don't remember how many years you said.
Three.
Because we don't have any budget, how on earth can we afford to be paying, you know, these one-off payments to these people? And that 60,000, I mean, I don't know how many county employees there are, but you could potentially have given that 60,000 as merit increases if we had the budget and benefit far more people than one person. And then all the comments I said at the beginning about severance, I still hold true. But I think it's absolutely wrong to evaluate performance after the fact when someone is leaving. That's just not, I don't...
Yeah, and it was a conversation about something that we discovered after the fact. And is this an injustice? Was he done wrong? If he was, how do we go about fixing that? Can we right that wrong? If we did, what would it look like? And can we even do it? That was the conversation.
But do we do that for every employee that leaves?
It was a conversation.
But we don't do that for every employee, so...
No, we don't. But if we found something that looked wrong, is this something we can fix?
But that is a problem.
And so that's what the conversation was. And somebody wants to make something bigger than that out of it.
How can it look wrong when his rate of pay is above the private sector? How does that look wrong? I'm asking.
Well, the replacement posted salary is way above what he was making, you tell me.
If we did that for every employee, we'd be bankrupt. If I have to say today, I got...
And so it was just something that looked wrong and we wanted to have a discussion about, is it wrong? If it is, can we fix it? If we were to try to fix it, how do we do that? What would that look like? That was the whole heart of the conversation.
And if it had happened in public, it would have been fine. That's what it comes down to, is that conversation about evaluating.
If we can't, we can't. If we could, we should.
And that is a problem for me. And the way that you said it is a problem because...
Well, I don't care if it's a problem for you, how I talk. I have a problem with the way you talk, but you have the freedom to talk like you want to. Let it rip.
The way that you posed it was, if we had the money, we should pay it. And that is a problem because you said if we can, we should. And that's not best practices for human resources. And we evaluate. And so what is the argument for the county? If we had the $60,000 extra and you gave it to that person, what is your process by which to mitigate the risk that you exposed our county to for saying, you chose that person? Did you evaluate, when was your last evaluation of the prior employees that left our employment? To say whether or not they were treated justly based on pay? Because kind of what we're advertising is Bonner County doesn't pay you well. I mean, that's what you're saying, but yet human resources does it every single year they evaluate and we use best practices. How is it that you came up with this one individual that you went through and determined on your own? And it's a pretty big shift to say you came in saying 17. I just told you that the dollar amount is quite a bit higher, it's a little more than $10 higher. So you were going to pay 60 at 17, what do you want to pay now that you know it's 2915? And the reality is, it doesn't matter what the answer is. The idea that if I have extra money, I get to pick who to give it to is a problem. That is not what government's supposed to do and it's not even what a private sector would do. That's not how we conduct business.
And that's why we have conversations?
No, we should have this, had this conversation, wouldn't have been so negative had you not started secreting the idea of giving one person a year's worth of salary and you just had the conversation of, should we change our compensation package as a county? That's the conversation that everyone should be having. And if they say, yeah, we think that, you know, at the time of service, if you didn't have A, B, C, and D, that we'd like to give you a merit bonus when you leave, that's in the public sphere. They're entitled to that. You don't have to mention the name. And one of the things that gets frustrating is, executive session is very small. It actually is, should be the opposite for a county. We should have very few of them because most of what we do is public. That's why we're a public agency. We don't ever have to say the name or the department to talk about this topic. We shouldn't say the name or the department when we talk about this topic because the idea would span everybody. And that's where we have to say the dreaded equitable distribution topic. But that's not what we're doing. You're bringing it to the individual and the service that they have, and that's not the job of the county. And it's not fiscally responsible. And you're taking this idea that it's just a conversation. It actually lets me as a taxpayer see your mindset when it comes to how you spend my money. If your thought is, if I like you when you leave, let me see how I could potentially give you something. Because that's what it looks like to the employer where we say, we don't have enough to give you a raise this year. We can only collect 3% because everybody knows, we're about to say that. We're about to say 3%, you're not getting anything. How do you justify this topic? Because the guy who's asking us for a raise right now wants to know why he didn't get something and it's because you're saving it for somebody else that didn't even ask. And doesn't it look wrong if commissioners take the initiative to get involved in human resources to spread money around? That's a problem for me as a taxpayer, as a constitutional conservative individual in Bonner County. That's troublesome for elected officials to go into people's HR files to see if they can change something about compensation. Because compensation is public and it's documented and it's HR's function, not ours. There's a problem with it.
I agree with that. And I guess just one more comment. I assume a policy will be written and it was, I don't know, a few months back, there was a number of HR policies on the agendas and they kept getting tabled and tabled and tabled, especially, I think Mr. Omat, you were the one spearheading those tabling. So I would like that when this policy comes for discussion and review in this forum, that it is not tabled, it is actually discussed timely. So, thank you.
You know, Spencer Hutchings, honestly, I really do have better things to do with my Tuesdays. I really hope you guys start doing a job where I don't have to watch you like a hawk for every single thing that you do. But when you're spending our money and you're doling it out to people, once again, picking winners and losers, you're picking who's getting our money, picking who's getting 60 grand. And instead of, you know, dividing it out and salary increases to all the county employees. How many county employees do we have, by the way? How many people work for the county?
Approximately 400-ish.
So 50,000-ish people in the county pay for 400 employees of the county. And so all the guys working at McDonald's making 17 bucks an hour, whatever those guys make that have to work in a place like that, they're getting nothing and we're paying county employees two, three times what they're making? You know, I mean, it doesn't really seem fair that the county employees are getting so much above the median wage in the county. You know, last I checked, what you guys do and what people who work for the government, city, county, state, federal government, that's public service. Your jobs are public service jobs, right? Is that what your jobs are, public service? If you're public service, why are you making so much more than the average public person who's paying your salary? How do you justify that? I mean, do you provide that much value? Do you think you do?
Depends on who you ask, I guess. If we ask you, the answer would be absolutely not.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I think it really does depend on who you ask.
You know, but you could always do like Dave Bowman, step up to the plate and run for office.
I have run for office.
Well, I'll comment on that.
I have run for office. Yeah, I have run for office and it was a painful process.
It is.
And I haven't done it again. You know, I don't know, I haven't decided yet. But the point of this is, is you're public servants, and I think we've forgotten that you guys are public servants. And we got a lot of people that work in this building who make a hell of a lot more than your average person in this county. And we really should consider if that's a good policy as a county to have, maybe we need to revisit the fact that we are conservatives, for the most part in this county, and we need to conserve the money of the county. Luke, you keep talking about, you want to save tax dollars, but you don't have any problems giving away 60 grand to somebody. You don't have any problem taking the giant salary that you get compared to the rest of the county. So you're not being very careful with the tax money. You know, as you guys are giving out raises to people, you know, if somebody's making 60, 50, you know, $75,000 around here, it's a good life. You know, we live in a beautiful place. Most of us, except the fact that we make less money, to live in this beautiful place. I do. I don't make anywhere near as much money as I used to where I used to live. But I don't care because I live in a beautiful place and I enjoy this place. So I'm willing to take less money. So giving the county employees higher salaries just because we can, it's not correct. You know, the county, we should be, you guys should be servants. You should not be grifting the county. You should not be raking us for every penny you can get out of us. And that goes for the whole county, all the employees.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Willie. I'm on a board of directors. And the appearance of impropriety looms large. You accuse people of lying by a half-truth and yet you tell a full lie by saying 17. Oh, I was mistaken.
That's the number that I was told.
The appearance of impropriety looms large on two-thirds of this board. That's why this room is full. That's why it's going to get more full. That is why people do not trust either one of you. Your coffee cup says, be careful, you may end up in my next sermon. I would please ask you to teach the seven things that God hates. Haughty eyes and lying lips, the two of them.
Well, as a board of directors, and you have an employee that you suspect may have been treated wrongly, do you address that? Would you address that? Of course you would.
To bring the complaint.
What if you're the one that finds it?
How did you choose? Appearance of impropriety.
Well, the appearance is to whoever's perspective it is. But I appreciate your comments. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Joseph Jackson for the record. My questions for Commissioner Bradshaw. Did the person in question work on your gubernatorial campaign?
Yes, he did.
Doesn't that strike you as being strange that of all the county employees, the one that's been a single officer, extra money is one who worked for you on a separate occasion?
He didn't get paid.
That's, so now he's getting paid for that work?
Well, let me ask you this. If I can't make a decision for somebody in Bonner County that donated to mine, hers, or Mr. Omat's campaign, who can we make a decision for?
Free donation. He worked for your election campaign. You said he didn't get paid, so now it appears to me as a individual, that you're working to pay him with public money.
Call it what you want to. Go whatever road you want to, that is your freedom.
Appearance of impropriety is strong here.
It is when you want to manipulate it like you want to.
Mr. Chairman, quite a hard, I'm not sure what our agenda, I've somehow got lost on what we are achieving. We don't have a motion on the floor. It has been three hours. I would like to call for a recess. I'm not sure what we're trying to achieve here. Commissioner Williams has presented her topic of discussion and a simple response I would give is Title 31 816, the duties of a commissioner according to state statute is the fixing of salaries, to fix the compensation of all county officers and employees and provide for the payment of the same. So there can be all sorts of allegations. There's also statute. Statute says that it is the responsibility, the power and duty, excuse me, of a board of commissioners. And I appreciate that that is to be done. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for a recess.
Actually, no, I'm not actually going to agree with you. And I want to allow everyone to continue. Because this was, I was asked by legal to change it from the memo to discussion so the community could discuss this topic because it belonged in the public sector. That's what happened. So I'm following, as you say, consult your attorney. That's what they asked for. So I removed the memo to allow the people to be able to speak. So reasonably, we should be allowing everybody to finish that has a comment on this and had we done it right the first time, we wouldn't have to revisit the topic. So, please, sir.
Go ahead.
Just as my last call, Commissioner Omat now is saying we should fix policies after the fact. So that if somebody's leaving now, we're going to change the policy and make it retroactive to people who've left. How far back can we go?
I don't think anybody indicated that, but go ahead.
As I just said.
Actually, it was stated, you said he's leaving and the person coming makes more. So you did state it. So as you look for facts, be careful what you say because I commented, nobody in human resources ever goes and says, today the job is worth more. We know everything goes up with the passage of time. You made the comment that that's the difference. I have not heard one comment of, where is the discrepancy that amounts to payment when you thought it was 17? You didn't read the job description, but it's actually 29. So is there still a discrepancy? Because you're saying that human resources has done something wrong, but you're actually not saying what it is that they did wrong.
That's why we had the conversation, to find out and explore all that. Somebody wanted to blow it up into something that wasn't. Go ahead, Dan Rose.
I'm just wondering, again, this should not have been necessarily an executive session of the policy part. If it wasn't sought or seen and then brought to the surface through multiple different ways, would you be giving that money away because it never made the public's ear?
If we didn't do it, we would have never had the conversation, would we?
We would have given it away. And so...
Not necessarily. We were having the discussion to see what that, if this is a wrong that has happened, the word if, I know you understand that. You're a smart man.
Don't belittle me here.
Okay. If this is a wrong that occurred to one of our employees who we are responsible for treating fairly, should we, could we, how would we fix a problem that we discovered might exist? We should discuss it and go from there and then decide whether or not we may need to make a decision. But somebody blew it way the hell out past that. And now y'all are all riled up about something that never occurred.
Well, it seems to me that the discussion that was secreted is now imputed, a liability...
Anytime we talk about an employee and wages, it will be done in executive session first and then if a decision is going to be made, it will be done in public.
But this wasn't about wages and as Mr. Omat says, if fixing a salary, fixing a salary is a salary, this isn't a salary, this is a severance. And so this is apples and oranges here. And what you've done is you've imputed onto the county a liability that does not exist in an executive session. And it's, how do we say, not executive session matter. That goes back to my point. If it weren't challenged, it would have been done. And for you to say that it wouldn't be when you brought it into the executive session meeting without seeing eyes and ears of the public, you do what you want to do. You've done it many times in executive session on many different issues. And to try to tell us that you wouldn't be giving the money away, Commissioner Williams objected, but we got a two to one vote, my guy's got it.
We didn't vote to give it away?
There's been no... There's been no vote. There was no motion put on the floor, but that's an interesting allegation.
Yes.
You just talked about it because you want to waste time, right?
Mr. Kramer, go ahead. Oh, Brandon, you got your hand up? Brandon, you still there?
Yes, yes, I'm here. Commissioner Bradshaw, you had mentioned that the current rate of pay for this individual versus the posting for the opening was, there's a disparity there. Is that the driver for this discussion? Is that the, the wrong that may or may not exist?
Yeah, that's why I thought it, it looked a little odd.
Okay, I will, I will share with you information from private enterprise. And that is that there is always a higher cost to attract new talent than there is to retain existing talent.
This is true.
It is 100% common for any position to have a higher rate of pay for the new person than the individual who is leaving. That does not indicate that there is some type of miss, some injustice that has occurred or misappropriation of resources or any of the such. Furthermore, whomever this individual is, and it's incumbent upon all of us to champion for ourselves. And if this individual believed that there was something wrong with their rate of pay, then they are more than welcome to go seek employment elsewhere, to discuss that with their leadership, to discuss that with HR. In addition to the fact that what Asia keeps bringing up, which is every year, every year, the people's compensation is reviewed and it's adjusted.
I have no qualms with anything you said.
Well, then I, I fail to understand why you would even brought it up. If you, if you understood those things, why was the question raised?
Well, I thought I covered that pretty good about eight or 10 times, but go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
If there wasn't a dissenting opinion, I believe wholeheartedly the check would have been cashed. We wouldn't be here. And that's the problem. It's the mindset of how is it that we're coming across this topic at all? And I, some people did message me and say, why is this even on the agenda? It's, it should be on the agenda if that's a consideration from this board. And you guys should be involved in the compensation aspect of it.
Absolutely. But we were just in the question and discussion answer, portion of it in executive session.
It's a misuse of executive session exactly.
Is this a wrong? Is this something, if it is a wrong, is this something we could correct? Is this something we should correct or should not correct?
How many other employees did you evaluate?
And somebody made a big toss salad out of the whole thing, but now we're here. So now the chair recognizes Mr. Kramer.
Who else did you evaluate upon their exit?
Just the one that we found at the time.
No, but did you, who, what is your case study? Tell me like one out of how many did you review? One out of one?
One out of one.
And so that in itself is a problem for me as a taxpaying person, as a commissioner, that you spot zoned one person in our county to do that to. That's not reasonable. And so there's a problem that you don't actually, you're, you're just saying it's just a conversation and you're watering it down. But the idea that you're putting forth is dangerous for county government because you should have come with a process by which you're doing that and not picking one person. Because a lot of people have left the county building since January and you evaluated none of those. How do you justify that? What, what brought it, what brought it to your attention to actually schedule an executive session to talk about doing it? It's something more than the other people that have left that is not being disclosed. And it's not a process that we have. We don't have exit interview. Do we agree with what you're getting paid?
Well, in the magical words of several people that spoke here today, there was an, there was an appearance that something was not really what it should be. And so I thought we should have the discussion and the conversation, but I will ask you this. Was there a motion made on giving him some money?
So the, the appearance of wrong is exactly what you just said. You took a person that was close to you and the.
And I would have done it for any employee in the county.
But you've done it for none. You've done it for none. And the negative that comes out of this is you brought forth the name and the department instead of the concept. Because if it was an issue for you, where was the raise, your one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Where was any of your comments about this? This is an open process that we have that was conducted appropriately per HR policies and best practices. What happened that brought it into, it wasn't just a, let's discuss it because this is the discussing it. This didn't occur first from your views. Your views went straight to executive. I want to give this amount because of these reasons. How can we do that?
Well.
And you're, you're right. I threw a flag and said, wait, this is an open comment and told the people we need to talk about this. Because the way we do business, that's the thing I know about. There's probably things I don't know about. And you guys have to be aware of the thought process of the people that are making the decisions because you see that it goes a two to one vote oftentimes. So that's what we do.
And I believe Legal was sitting in the chair right behind this lady here during that, during that meeting.
And they told you, oh, my gosh, no.
Oh, my gosh, this is inappropriate, then we would have went on to the next item, wouldn't we? But that didn't happen, so.
No.
Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
Don't mistake it because I've been real nice about not saying what Legal told you in that executive session. And there was no support from Legal and they very specifically stated that when I said I was going to be releasing what happened.
Exactly. And we, and we didn't make a decision to come out and make a motion and make a decision. It never got that far. Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
So first, I'd like to ask you, when did this issue, this inappropriate pay thing, when did it come on your radar?
Like last week?
Based on, why? Why did it come on your radar?
It just came up in a discussion and I'm going, well, that seems wrong.
Between?
I don't remember exactly who the, it was somebody to do in HR or, or somebody in this building.
Human Resources did not come to us about this. That's not true.
No, it was, it just came out in a conversation. It wasn't a, a subject that was brought.
You don't remember the conversation?
It wasn't brought forward.
You wanted an executive meeting, but you can't remember who thought it up?
It came out in a conversation, so.
You wanted to have.
And I thought, we should talk about this and look at it.
You had an executive meeting based on a conversation that you cannot remember who said it to you? Is that what you're telling me?
It was in one of our meetings.
Did you, you and Commissioner Ahmet both went to another elected official to have this discussion? So why don't you just put it all out on the table?
After, after it was discovered.
How was it discovered?
How was it discovered? That's what I'm asking you.
So, so, Mr., where are we going with this, Mr. Chairman? I'm not sure.
We're done with it.
Where we're going, where we're going with this is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you've got something else.
I have a comment and a question.
I'm just wondering what the agenda, what the agenda item is on how we're getting.
Excuse me, Mr. Omart. I have the floor right now. I have the floor. It's my turn to speak.
No, this is a commission, this is the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
He called on him already.
Thank you, I just say a point of order, Mr. Chairman. That was it.
So, so I would like to go back, Aza, Asia, I'd like to go back to the beginning of this whole thing where you shared with us that these two gentlemen had an executive meeting without you.
I was in the meeting on this topic.
She was here.
I was in the meeting on this topic. I didn't know that this was the topic.
You didn't know it was the topic?
I didn't know the topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Heisner, you got your hand up for a while there?
Yep, sorry about that. Regarding this conversation that took place in, in, in the setting, my personal opinion is it seems a little discriminatory to, to single out one county employee to discuss any type of what is fair and what isn't fair. On a pay scale, while we have, all of our fire departments have volunteer firefighters, I think maybe that should be something that should be discussed as a whole, our fire departments, and, and maybe thinking about paying those guys because we do live in a wilderness setting, where we do have forest fires. And it, it's just something that popped into my head that is, is kind of crazy. The whole thing's kind of crazy. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree with you. Unfortunately, we have no say so over the fire department, one way or the other.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Dodd?
Yeah, I've had my hand up for a really long time and I, several people have said some of this. And I just want to reiterate and make it very clear. I think to play this down as if it's just a conversation is disingenuous. Action items all start out as conversations. I have a huge problem with our commissioners arbitrarily.
We lost you there for a second.
Of discussion. I just want to make it very, very clear that I find it insulting, offensive, that you think it is okay to arbitrarily decide to discuss paying an exiting employee extra money because you think they were underpaid for some reason. And you won't even tell us how that came about. Employment is at will. If they felt they were underpaid, they could have left before now and found different work. Or they could have negotiated a different rate of pay while they worked for the county. And now that I'm hearing that this individual worked.
We lost you there.
Question, what are we trying to accommodate, accomplish here today on this agenda item? I, for me, I would like to hear from our commissioners that they understand, have heard what everyone is saying here and that you will never decide to arbitrarily discuss one, one isolated person leaving line that is going to lead us into that discussion. So that there's some kind of foundation and basis so that we can trust that there is not favoritism going on. Because that's what it looks like to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sue Fagan, I have a question personally for you. Knowing now that the guy, the pay was actually 29 and not 17, would you still be having the discussion?
Probably not.
Thank you.
Sherry, you had your hand up for a while?
Uh, yeah, I have kind of a two-part thing here. I just went and looked to see the posting for the, the job that we're discussing because y'all have discussed that the next person will get more and I never saw the posting. Can you tell me how much the rate of pay will be for the incoming VSO?
I'd have to go back and look at that.
I can answer that for you, Sherry. What I, I'll take a little bit of liberty. I think the comment is being made that the incoming will receive more than the individual's incoming rate. But the rate of pay is not going up from the, the stated rate of pay currently for that person. It's just that they're starting out higher than the other person started out at.
Well, it was eight years ago, so I guess that would be expected and I appreciate that. But I do want to comment that this is the very reason that HR should never be under the commissioners. They are a separate department and they should stay separate. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine? No, Noella? You got your hand up?
I sure do. I just wanted to make a simple comment that states to specifically Luke that he is a, an elected official and he's working for us, the people. And that that might be a Bonner County Commissioners' meeting, but you are a representative of the people. So this is our meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
On the record, I just want to tell you, I'm a little bit alarmed that you went into executive session with information that you couldn't back up. You were thinking this gentleman made $17 an hour, so you didn't have facts that you brought in the, into the executive session. So I would encourage that in the future.
And that was the reason for it.
Right. So I would encourage that in the future. You could have bypassed this whole debacle here if you knew that he made $29 an hour. Are you still willing to give him $10,000 of your salary?
I'd give him $10,000 of my salary anyway.
So are you going to be doing that?
Just because of the man, what he's provided for our veteran.
And I will tell you, he's a great man. I've worked with him, so there is no doubt about that.
About as good as they get.
Yes, but I'm just disappointed that you guys didn't have all the facts when you went into executive session.
That's why we go into executive session to have the conversation and get the facts and see where we go.
But even.
You know what? And you can decide what you weren't, want to. You weren't there. You don't know. You're assuming based on what you were given. So unless you were there, you really don't know how it went. Yeah, you will never agree with it if we gave it to you, Dan, so.
So, Mr. Bradshaw, with all due respect, I, I'm just concerned that no one had the facts about this gentleman's pay when, when you guys went into executive session because it seems like.
That's why I wanted to know.
Right, but it should have, I mean, it shouldn't have taken today for you to figure out that he makes $29 and some change an hour. Because even this morning, when you opened up the meeting, you said he makes $17 an hour. That's a hard cry from 29.
It is.
So I, I would just encourage you guys to have the facts, to have the facts before you go into.
And that is not what, executive session is not a fact gathering session. That's not what an executive session is. It is not for us to have running commentary about something. And I don't know, where do you go from here?
Shannon Van Ader for the record, I'm at the risk of taking it all back to the beginning. Why are we even having this discussion if he didn't even ask for the money? That's my only comment.
That would have to be answered by the commissioners that put forth the idea to pay it. I think one of the things that's hard for me is that this individual, now that he's been identified, is, is a fantastic individual and the name dragging because of the will of two commissioners is unfortunate when we should be celebrating the contribution to our county, the contribution to the service department that he worked in. Instead, we decided to use it in, in politics by mentioning the name instead of just sticking to the agenda item of what should we as commissioners be doing? And hopefully this is a lesson for, this is not how we conduct business in private sector, let alone government agencies.
I'd like to just go back to the very beginning when I opened up my public comment about the VSO. I, I, I don't think I can be, how to say, any more positive about this individual than that he should be sitting in one of those two seats. And since he's from that jurisdiction, that would be a perfectly good thing to do is to allow him to make some more money, making good judgments from the seat which he belongs. And I just want to reemphasize that if he were here today, I think he would be asking you to deny any consideration of this action. Oh, I'll call it act with a capital A. He's that well-good of a man. And so this whole discussion should have no, absolutely no bearing on him, his character or anything related to him. That belongs right there. That's where it started. That's where it belongs.
Right.
And so I would ask that a motion be made to put this to rest and to.
Move on to the next agenda item?
No, 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 to make us feel that you've heard us, that we're motioning to not give out any severance pay to this individual and to no individual until such time as human resources has made those changes. I'll submit my written comment that I made all throughout the meeting today. I didn't include, no, actually, I'm going to hold that back because it's something I want to mention next week.
With respect to the motion, we'll move on to the next item on my little section there, but.
On to the next thing.
The motion isn't going to be made based on the advice of Legal. They felt that this venue would likely shut down that process, but if it comes again, then we'll draft it. Because there's specific language that would have to go in for that. So my next item on the agenda is regarding streaming, Zoom and, what was that? YouTube and any other, trying to remember what that other name is. Rumble, yes. For public meetings to include meetings notice within 24 hours. So 24 hours is very short notice. And when I look at how many meetings have been done on the 24-hour notice, they're not meetings that need short notice like the fair meeting. And what I noticed from my seat is it is limiting the public's involvement in the topic. And those are the specific topics that seem to come on the 24-hour notice. And then Friday was very telling when we started it saying, oh, I don't know why you're here. You're not speaking essentially. And so a lot of people have messaged, what was the meeting about? What was the discussion? And we don't know. It would also release the burden from our clerks because the first thing I did was said, send me the audio. And so it is in our best interest to, it would also kind of check the commissioners on, why are we requesting it? Is it absolutely necessary and require us to pay attention to our responsibility? I don't agree with the statement about how hard it would be for technology, but if it's hard for technology, then maybe it's not that important to do 24 hours. Like the solid waste, I do see why, why didn't it just come on this agenda so that we don't?
So that we don't create these multiple days in the week where we're asking people that have a life outside of our county to come back to the building. Because on the 24-hour notice, you are required to come to the building to participate. So it's our obligation per statute that we encourage meaningful input from the public. In my opinion, the 24-hour meeting, with the exception of very few, such as the emergency for the road failure, it seems to be intentional to limit public involvement. And I quite frankly, on Friday, to be told to be muted also is a bother to me because I wasn't supposed to be here on Friday either. So I think this should have to have consideration, not just for the I-wants, but the public. Because the more we include the public, the less frustrations that exists because you know what we're doing, the less negativity in the community. And I don't see a reason why this board wouldn't because short of the state of emergency, I don't see a 24-hour meeting notice that was necessary for that short. Quite frankly, I felt that the RV park comment was intentionally done on Friday. There was no saving of time. We had a holiday yesterday. They're probably not even looking at it today. We could have done it today and walked it over there and still had the same amount of time. So I move that we stream, I'll just use the word stream, on all available platforms, public meetings to include public meetings that are noticed within 24 hours.
I will second the motion for discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we've had this motion come before us previously. There has been no change. I find it rather ironic that just one agenda previously, we're talking about saving money and now we're looking to add another employee. The conversation has not changed with IT. IT has informed me that if we were to do all of these meetings, it's going to require another employee. So I am prepared to vote no, just as I did previously.
I actually have an email from technology that says that it doesn't. And as we see, technology is actually using the platform that we're streaming on. And so you could set it up and there is not that much difficulty in actually allowing one of the clerks to actually do that. And so there are a lot of times and a lot of meetings, and I used elections as the example, there is a difference from when the last time this came up. The increase of 24-hour meetings has been significant enough that it is pushing the public out of the business. And so I would argue that if you don't want to allow technology to just start the stream, then you agree to not do 24-hour meetings unless it's actually an emergency that you clearly state what the emergency is then. Because Friday wasn't an emergency. Tomorrow isn't an emergency. But they're 24-hour, and so you're saying, community, come on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. That's a lot of coming to just basically audit commissioners. And so we owe it to the people and quite frankly, even if it was another employee that was needed to stream, it's probably worth it at the rate that we're going with these 24-hour meetings. Because the community would actually be saved money for us spending the money that way and they could stay home and zoom it in. But you have increased specifically 24-hour meetings and you have told me personally that the answer is it's done legally. Sure, it's done legally. But it again is the, here's the bar. We met the minimum qualifications. Is it reasonable to say, hey, I see Asia's not actually in the building and this is really important. What do I get out of doing it on Friday? Probably going to piss some people off. I'll just do it on Tuesday. That way the public's involved and Asia's there and we're a good working board. Instead, it comes on Friday and I get, are you coming? Are you coming? I'm, holy crap, now I'm coming. We're not functioning as a board. The 24-hour meeting notice is cumbersome to the community. So would you agree, if you don't vote for this, to stop doing it unless it's a true emergency that you clearly explain to the community?
Mr. Chairman, I would call the question.
Okay.
What about public comment?
Not yet. If you were to amend your motion to say something like that, you'd probably pull more favoritism from this desk.
All right, so I will amend the motion to say, stream and Zoom for public meetings to include meetings notice within 24 hours when possible.
I will step down from the chair and second that.
You've got three hands up there.
Okay.
And actually.
Now discussion, I guess.
I just have a clarifying question.
Let me, let me, let me actually.
I mean, if technology can make it happen.
Let me pause that because I actually sent it to Legal for review. So I want to read exactly what he told me was okay. Sorry, I should have done that first. So I'll let, let the questions go. Want to do the questions while I find his.
Okay, Sherry.
Yeah. My question is in regards to Luke's comment about hiring another employee. Would that employee be paid more or less than $60,000? Since that seems to be an okay amount for Luke to spend.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Christine, Noella? You out there, Christine? Okay, Brandon?
Yeah, I'd just like to reference Commissioner Omat's website when he was running for office. And specifically, Commissioner Omat, you talk about how strong infrastructure makes a strong Bonner County, how strong relationships make a strong Bonner County. And strong infrastructure includes technology in the streaming of these meetings. Further, strong relationships, engaging the public, giving us an opportunity to at least see what is happening, even if it's not a meeting where the public can comment, helps support these strong communities and build strong relationships. So I would encourage you to reference your own words when making your decision on this vote.
Good, thank you.
So I'm going to change the motion to read the memo. Based on the information before the Board of Commissioners, I move that the Board stream and Zoom all meetings to include 24-hour notice limits, meetings notice. 24-hour notice limits public participation due to the shortened notice. There is a disclaimer that there may be times when the urgency of an issue or staffing issue may result in the meeting not being available for streaming or zooming. I have to second that one.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Omet?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
End on a good note.
All right.
I just couldn't remember yours.
It is 12:37 and we will recess this meeting. Y'all want to take lunch and come back or? We'll recess for five minutes for those that are working under pressure and come back into executive session.